All right, good night, everybody. Tonight is the Monday, August 21st, 2023 Select Board Meeting for Town of Lakeville. We have members Fabian Carboni and Dave President this evening, as well as Town Minister Sky and others that will join us throughout the evening as we work through our agenda. First item of the evening are Select Board announcements. And if you didn't already see it, Hardee, congratulations to the Ait Nutter Free Lake Baseball Team. They not only made it to the Calhoun World Series, they also finished third in the end. That series alone was 10 different teams. The first and second place teams were the only ones that they actually had a loss to, which was an amazing feat, not only in that tournament, but they had to get through two other tournaments to get there. So we look forward to celebrating with team members Ben Sasse, Lex Muse, Liam Souza, Maverick Chu, Tyrus again, Zach Amaral from Lakeville, and Al Vega, Brady Dittara, Jeremiah Mick Sheffrey from Freetown, K Rissar from Yew Taunton, Riley Lewis, and Silas Frazendas from Assonet. So thank you very much for all the efforts and their team play. We look forward to seeing you at a future meeting, hopefully. If you have ever wanted to volunteer on a commission or a committee, the town has vacancies on the Conservation Commission, Cable Advisory Committee, Capital Expenditure Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Energy Advisory Committee, and Open Space Committee. To apply, please visit the town's website on the Town Clerks page where you will find the volunteer form. Do you have any other last minute announcements you'd like to make before passing it on to Ari?
I'm good, Ari.
Okay, Mr. Sky, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yourself, Chairman Dave, Melissa Turcot, Frank Moniz, and I walked the Gamash Playground Site last week. There's still some work remaining before the facility will be ready for public use. Frank and Melissa are working with the local contractor to advance the project. As I mentioned previously, as I've mentioned previously, I've been working with Middleborough Gas and Electric to develop a plan to install electric vehicle charges for public use. Two locations under consideration are Town Hall and Loon Pond Lodge. The project will be funded through a grant, and MG&E will maintain the equipment after it's been installed. MG&E staff were previously looking at discussing the proposal tonight, but there's some delay assembling the full package when we get to late last week. So we're now planning to bring the package to the board on September 5th. Town's contract with Boston Tavern for the operation of Loon Pond Lodge is due to expire on March 29th, 2024. I spoke with Melissa Turcot about asking the Parks Commission to designate a liaison to identify their issues and concerns as we move forward. Work began this week on renovation of the Veterans Memorial. We came next to Old Town Hall. The initial phase involves replacing the flashing on the borders. Further work will refresh the signage. Facilities is working in coordination with the Historical Commission to ensure the renovations are consistent with the current presentation. Lastly, the Department of Revenue has certified the town's free cash for FY24. The general fund was certified a little over $3.9 million, $3,908,000 and change, an amount that was aided by a one-time lease payment of $12,150,000 for the Fern Street Cell Tower. While the Parks and Landfill Enterprise Funds were certified at $56,887 and $202,633 respectively. Great work, as always, by the town departments and especially accounting. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September 5th, at the Lakeville Police Station, not the normal Monday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Ari on those announcements? We got anything?
No.
Okay. Soon our next regular meeting is the 5th. We are having, I believe, one more planning session on the 29th.
Yeah, one's scheduled yesterday.
So that won't be a normal meeting like this evening. That'll be a very focused agenda for, I think, five-member transition. Okay. All right. So we're a few minutes away from 6:15, where we have a hearing scheduled. So I'd like to move, if we can, to item number four, discuss some possible votes to approve Select Board Minutes of July 10th and July 31st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board Minutes of July 10th, 2023. Second.
Okay. Discussion. I have one very, very small correction. It was on the third page of the 31st minutes. It looked like it said Chairman Day was going to summarize the Town Ministerial Goals and bring them back tonight. I think it was Ari that was doing that. So that's all it was.
That's correct.
But otherwise, that's all I have. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board Minutes of July 31st, 2023, with the change identified. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, let's see here. Do we wish to talk about the town accountant's contract, or would you like to come back to that? We've got a few minutes before the hearing is scheduled. Four.
Aye.
Hmm? Okay. All right, number five, discuss some possible votes to approve the contract with the town accountant. Mr. Sky, if you'd like to summarize this for us once more.
So this is the three-year doctor accountant with the Hassett Financial Services. I frequently miss this one. It expired on June 30th, 2023, the first iteration. Originally negotiated in June 2020, which predated my arrival. The information is identical to the previous contract. The only difference is the rates, which per the standard, per prior practice with Todd's contract, going up at 2:15 hour every year.
Okay. All right, did anybody have any questions on the new contract compared to the old contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for our town accountant for the commencement of July 1st, 2023, and to expire on June 30th, 2026. Second.
Okay, just one quick comment. Thank you, Todd Hassett, for all the work that he does. He actually got that free cash certification so fast, shows a lot to his commitment to the town. So all in favor of the contract?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you, Ari, for putting that together.
Thank you.
All right, two minutes.
Ari's goal, I guess.
Yep, let's do number seven, discuss some possible votes to approve Town and Ministerial FY24 Goals, which is really just a summary of the discussion we had last time. Ari, thank you for summarizing those and bringing them back. I looked through what you sent us. It looked like everything that we had discussed. Were there any concerns over the updated list?
Nope.
You agree with that?
I'm good.
All right.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Town Administrator FY24 Goals as presented. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you. Let's go then to discuss some possible vote to issue the Commonwealth of Massachusetts warrant to animal control officers. So this one essentially is a, I'll call it a standardized warrant from the Commonwealth, which then defines exactly what our ACOs and assistant ACOs are supposed to do in their line of duty and give them the authority to do so. I don't know that we need to read it in its entirety, but is there any questions about this? This is a yearly thing, Tracy?
Yes, it's an annual thing.
Okay.
I just had one thing in the opening paragraph listing the animal control officers. Lisa Pedelski, it says of the Town of Lakeville, should that say Freetown?
She lives in Lakeville.
Okay. So this is where they live?
This is where they reside.
Not what they represent?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions on this?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts warrant to the animal control officers under Mass General Law Chapter 140.
Okay. Would this expire a year from today, Tracy?
There isn't an expiration date. It's just done annually, so I put it on the calendar, so we'll do it.
Okay.
Ideally, we like to do it in May, so I have it for May of next year.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. And we got to 6:15. All right. So we will go back to number three, a public hearing for the transfer of off-premises wine and malt package store license for 33 Bedford Street, known as Joe's Gas. So a minute to get back to that, please. All right, so the first thing that we will do is read the newspaper notice. All right, Tracy, do you want to off-topic, what day we posted the notice by chance? If not, that's fine.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know what day we posted the notice by chance?
August 10th, it was in the paper.
Okay, so on August 10th, we posted, "From Town of Lakeville pursuant to Chapter 138 of the General Laws, the Lakeville Select Board, acting as the licensing board, will conduct a public hearing at 6:15 on Monday, August 21st, 2023, on the application of Joe and Chloe Gas, Inc., doing business as Joe's Gas, for a transfer of the wine and malt package store license for the property located at 33 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts. Said hearing will be held in the Rita Agarbit Community Meeting Room at the Lakeville Police Station located at 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts." All right. All right, so entertain a motion to open the hearing for this license transfer.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, will anybody be testifying this evening to the transfer? We don't have anyone to speak to this tonight? Okay. All right, so there's no one to swear in. The applicant here tonight? Okay. Could you come forward, please, sir, and sit at the microphone?
Sure.
Just so we can get it on the recording. All right, sir, your name, please?
My name Gilbert Issa, I-S-S-A.
Welcome tonight, Gilbert.
Thank you.
So tonight, since you will be speaking on behalf of this application, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth as part of this?
Hundred percent.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. All right, so would you mind, obviously, there's a lot of paperwork that goes through this, would you mind just giving us a summary of your application this evening and what your intentions will be?
So this is, I've been in business in Rainham for like 17 years. I just got this location, Joe's Gas, August 1st. I don't have beer and wine in Rainham, but this is my first time I will have a license or permit for beer and wine. Regarding this, I mean, I would love to, I know, I hope it will be approved by you guys, but beside that, I have nothing to say.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe we don't have any other testimony. Is there any other questions for this gentleman at this time? No?
Welcome to Lakeville.
Thank you.
Welcome. Wish you success.
I've been after this guy for like eight years to sell me this station. Finally, it happened.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
One question is perhaps to Mr. Issa, if he's going to keep the same hours?
Ah, yes, yes, thank you very much.
No changes.
No changes to those hours?
No changes.
Thank you, sir, appreciate the clarification. All right, so appearing to don't have any other questions this time, so entertain a motion to close the hearing for this license transfer.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, closure.
Thank you.
Do the Select Board members have any discussion they'd like to have on this transfer?
Do not.
Okay. Leah, you good?
Um, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right, and let's see here.
Well, other than, do we have everything that we need, Tracy, to approve the package?
Yes, Mr. Issa sent out the legal notices, certified mail. He sent out four notices, he received two back, and he's provided us with a check for reimbursement of the legal ad.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Gotcha.
All right, let's see.
Just one other quick question. The license itself for the year is $1,500, I believe, right?
Beer and wine is less.
Okay.
Um, it might be $750. I'll have to check.
So with the transfer of license to the new owner, if the fee was already paid by the previous owner, how does that?
It's, um, well, he doesn't pay the fee for the liquor license until the ABCC goes through it. So the ABCC is anywhere from, they're saying, six to 12 weeks to approve. So if they're latter, the license renewal starts like the end of October. So we wouldn't refund anything to the current owner.
Okay.
And then Mr. Issa wouldn't pay his fee until the ABCC approves it, and it comes back to you, you sign it, and that's when his fee will be due. The question is, and this is perhaps to the board, say it comes back the end of September or during October, the renewal season begins the end of October, do we want to charge him $750 for a month, and then he'll have to pay the renewal fee when he submits his renewal the next month?
Right.
So that will be up to, you know, I mean, that's up to you to decide. You can decide that at a later meeting.
Yeah, let's just take a note, keep an eye on that.
Yeah.
And we hear back, we'll figure out what to do.
Okay.
All right, anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of off-premises wine and malt package store license for 33 Bedford Street, also known as Joe's Gas.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing unanimously. Thank you, sir, appreciate you for this evening.
Thank you.
Good luck in your venture.
Thank you.
Okay, so, one, two, three, four, five. So we'll come to number six, an update on the Assawampset Elementary School Windows and Door Project. We have a number of individuals with us this evening. As with any project involving children, it can get relatively personal. So I know we're all looking forward to the completion of this project. We'd be a great upgrade to the school. So what I'd like us to focus on this evening, if we may, is where we stand. We have the project manager joining us by Zoom this evening. Thank you, sir. So I'd like to see where we stand, what is left to be done, and who the owners on those task items are. I believe we're aiming towards a school opening date of the 30th, but obviously, teachers like to get in a few days early, and we are on the 21st. So at this point in time, the Select Board members have specific questions. I'd like to open the floor to Joe, our project manager, to bring us up to date on where things are, if that's okay?
Okay. So the project is on schedule, per the original schedule, it was put together back in February, March of this year. The, by the time school opens, approximately 175 of the 283 windows will be installed, and a portion of the doors will be installed by that time. The project completion date is October 20th, and at this point, the contractor is on schedule to meet that date, or at this point, slightly improve on that date. So the school will be able to open all classrooms in the priority area that the project team has identified. All of those classrooms will have their windows installed. Any classrooms or any spaces that need to have natural light, temporary windows will be installed in the plywood windows that are over the windows at this time. So I'd say the project is on schedule. It's proceeding as planned. It's well within budget, and from my perspective, it's going very, very well.
So, sir, just to reiterate the numbers you said, for confirmation, you said you estimated 175 out of 283 windows will be installed, plus some doors, by, do we want to say?
By the time school opens. So I'd add Sunday before later day.
Okay. Okay. I know we've had some slight mishaps, which weren't your problem or our problem, where the first windows that we expected didn't arrive, but it sounds like that you've kind of rearranged the priority areas, and that's going okay?
Yes. So the window delivery was delayed by approximately four to six weeks. The contractors come up with a plan to accelerate in a reasonable manner in order to meet his contract requirements. At this point, the progress is a little bit ahead of what was estimated for the number of windows to be installed each day. So things are moving along nicely.
All right. So obviously, we're all concerned with the safety and cleanliness of our students when they go back. You know, other Select Board members, do you have any other questions along those lines at this point, before we perhaps go a little broader?
I'd like to ask to get just an update on all the specifics, actually, not just generalities, but the specifics of all the air quality testing that's going to still need to take place. Is that correct?
So the air quality testing you are likely referring to is related to the asbestos abatement work. The asbestos abatement work for the windows is completed. Reports were prepared by an asbestos monitor, and reports have indicated that there has been no release, that all areas have been cleaned properly in accordance with mask guidelines for asbestos abatement. And there has been, they've done ambient air monitoring, and there's been no releases of asbestos in the building or the environment.
Have all the classrooms and furniture been cleaned according to the big contract there? What's that called?
AIA.
G?
AIA.
AIA, thank you. Is that you, Deirdre? Sorry.
Yes, so construction cleaning occurs when they did the abatement, the abatement areas are contained with plastic, so that no dust is allowed to escape the work area. Each work area is being cleaned, and it's under the direction of an asbestos monitor. The asbestos monitor confirms that there is no visible asbestos, and then also takes samples that are analyzed under a microscope apathocyte to confirm that there are no asbestos fibers in the work area, in each work area. And then ambient air monitoring is also done in the hallways and the spaces around to confirm, to reconfirm that there has been no release of asbestos.
Okay.
And that's the case, everything has come back negative.
Okay.
And so the areas that, as far as cleaning the rest of the building, there is a normal process that Craig and his crew goes through to clean the property for the kids to come back to school, and we're coordinating our activity for the construction cleaning with the activity that Craig has with his team of janitors.
Okay, I have more questions. I don't know if you guys want to jump in on these, so that we don't...
Let's just kind of follow up on that. I think you have a question, if you don't mind, is, do we feel, is that Greg Goodwin you're speaking to, the collaboration there?
Yeah. Greg, you're here.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if the two of you feel that enough time has been given once construction cleaning is done, is the district's team going to have enough time to get into what they need?
So this time of year, there's never enough time. Just going to put it out there. We're going to be in our normal state of cleaning at this point in time. It does impact us. It's very clear and transparent. We're going to have to put a little time in. Before this project started, we went through every space, every, I would say, our most, our priority spaces, the classrooms where the students will be occupying these rooms, and we gave them a thorough cleaning. I know it sounds a little crazy, but we gave them a thorough cleaning prior to the project. That way, when the project moved on and we were able to get into them spaces, the majority of the heavy lifting would have been done. So we'll be going back into them spaces, and we'll be touching them spaces up. We'll be cleaning the surfaces, all the touch surfaces, desks, chairs, countertops. They're putting new window sills and things like that, which they'll be cleaning as they finish that project and move on. But as far as that goes, we feel that we're right on target with that. Everything seems to be good. We've transferred our crew over there this week as we move them. We've got five buildings, and they're all in different stages of being, getting prepared for school. So most of them are about 85% ready, 90% ready. Assawampset is one of those buildings that's coming up now. The crew is transferred over. We should have a good transition this week, so we feel that we're going to be looking pretty good.
Okay.
So can I just get clarification on priority area? So does that mean that, so we always knew at the beginning of the project that this was never going to be completed by the time school was going to go back, but I never remember hearing, and if I did, I apologize, that we were going to have to put temporary windows. I thought it was just the doors that weren't going to be completed for either one of you or anybody.
That would be a question for Joe?
Okay.
Yeah, the approach the contractor took to the project is to remove the windows, get the abatement work done, and to put in temporary plywood over the, over those openings. And then, of course, what it also allowed is to get some preliminary work done, so that when the windows did show up, allowed the crews to move at a greater, at a faster pace to get the windows installed. And it's, it has played out pretty much as planned, that it has allowed them to proceed faster with the windows and the installation. So at this point, the priority areas are the classrooms on the first floor, the cafeteria, the outside, essentially, all of the outside windows. Those were the priority windows for the project. All of those windows will be done prior to school opening. If there are any spaces, and at this point, the project team has identified, there may not be any other spaces that would be occupied in a manner that natural light is really a requirement, but if there are any of those areas, and we'll be confirming that actually in our meeting tomorrow, if there are any of those areas that require natural light, the contractor will be cutting in temporary windows for the period of time between when the use is needed and when windows can be installed.
Okay, what is, where does the second floor fall on the priority list?
So at this point, we really, we really just have the main priority areas and then the rest of the project. So the second floor is part of the rest of the project.
Is it fair to say that that's what would happen between school opening and October 20th, those areas?
Yes.
Would that, would that work?
It just clarified, the work will be performed after hours. So the work hours begin as of the 30th of August, begin at 4:00 PM and run through midnight. So it'll all be done on the second shift after the children have left the school. All areas have to be put back together and ready for occupancy the following day. And you mentioned something about doors. The doors will be installed and will be operable the following day. So there never be a situation where a door is not operable for access, egress, or emergency.
Sir, does operable include putting that back up to the school's security system as well?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Just as far as sign-off and occupancy, I think overall for the project, I think our building commissioner and our fire chief have been attending your meetings, so I'm assuming that they're going to be providing some kind of sign-off for the town for occupancy?
You probably best for Mr. Gallings to answer that question.
You good with me?
I think so.
All right, very good. I'll go someone to you. I see you.
Mr. Gallings?
Hi, sir.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, the process that I've requested is prioritizing it from a building commissioner's perspective, was making sure that the students are safe and healthy. So we've requested final certification and narrative for full asbestos abatement. We received that today, so that's going to go with the paperwork. And the other piece of that is through the architectural firm, SLAM Collaborative, we've requested a final affidavit saying that it's suitable from a code perspective for temporary occupancy. So once I, once I get the affidavit, we'll be prepared for temporary occupancy. I do want to touch a little bit on the after hour and weekend work. So, you know, Joe mentioned that the asbestos abatement was complete on the windows. We still have the doors. So when we're removing doors on the weekend, we have required all of the final clearance testing on Sunday night before the start of school on Monday. So we're creating a process to make sure that all abatement work done on the weekends once school starts has been, has gotten final clearance through the asbestos monitor, so...
So those doors won't be removed during the school week?
Correct. The doors, Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong here, any abatement work after school starts will be limited to doors only, and that will be only conducted on weekends where they have sufficient time to do the abatement and do the clearance testing prior to the start of school on Monday.
That is correct.
And is the, sir, is the district and yourself figured out what that process would be if we don't get that certification on Sunday evening, or is that still being worked through?
Well, I mean, I can speak for myself, and the process would be, if I didn't get the certification on Sunday, it would allow school to go forward on Monday. That's, that would be my stance. I know that's a hard stance, but we all have a responsibility here, and I feel as though the school would support that.
Do you have a cutoff time?
I think we can establish that. I'll be attending the meeting tomorrow. We can establish a cutoff time and notification list, so perhaps it's, you know, Ari, myself, the fire chief, Board of Health, and, you know, the project team on Sunday night by maybe 4:00.
Yeah, I'll make sure we discuss that tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, can we get that answer?
Yep.
As soon as you all have it. As soon as you all have it. I have, I'm sure we'll call the fire chief up too.
That was one of my ones. I think I have one question, maybe that's good with Nate President, if you don't mind?
Yep.
So Joe, I know enough about a construction just to be uselessly, you know, interruptive, but, I mean, we've gotten a couple pictures from residents saying like, wow, there's huge gaps between the edge of the window frame and the jam itself. I mean, are these within tolerance from the manufacturer? I mean, they, they look massive, but I don't know what kind of foam or caulking or whatever's gonna be used there.
Yeah, everything is definitely within tolerance. Slam Collaborative, architect is inspecting the installation to be sure that all work is done in accordance with manufacturer requirements and the plans and specifications that they prepared. It may be the case that some work may not be completed entirely on any given window, so it may look that the spacing is a bit odd, but please be assured that this project's being overseen by a very capable architect, and that has done many, many, many window projects in the past. They were very satisfied with the selection of the manufacturer, so we have high confidence in ECO, the manufacturer of the windows. So I am confident that with Slam's oversight and our oversight as quality assurance to make sure that product is performed and the work is done in accordance with plan and specs.
Do you need anything from the manufacturer, just from a safety point of view, or?
Yeah, so, so maybe tomorrow will be an opportunity. I'd request walking around with Slam Collaborative to kind of go over some of the stuff with Joe, maybe take a once over of what is currently installed in case there's any question that, you know, questions that arise, and we'll be able to come back to this board with answers. I did notice that the gapping was rather large. If Slam Collaborative is able to verify that's within the tolerances for rough openings, I think that would be sufficient. You know, the other piece obviously is the plywood on the second floor. We're coming into hurricane season. We wanna make sure all of the fastening is appropriate so that we have those protected openings in the event that we do have a storm come through. So I was gonna bring up a couple of those things tomorrow. I'm sure they'll be addressed, and right now I don't have any concerns.
Yeah, one aesthetic question. It looked like there's at least an area where the flashing or trim doesn't really match up on the windows. Is that part of the aesthetic design, the contrast between those, or?
Yeah, I have to have the architect comment on that, with all the color choices were made by the district and exactly where that variation is occurring and catching someone's eye, really can comment on it at this point.
That's fair. Maybe during the walkthrough, that's noticeable.
Yeah.
Anything, Maureen? I'll bring up the chief next.
No, but maybe for the school district or...
Okay, so joining us, Chief O'Brien. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I'm expecting fire drills and egress are in your wheelhouse. Is there anything you'd like to speak to?
It's, it's not, it's a unique situation, but the process is the same every year. We inspect the schools, each school four times a year, and I try to get in the schools, I do get in the schools right before they open to make sure that the building's safe for opening every year. So what I've done in this process is I try to communicate my expectations because it's in this complicated, you know, project, sometimes people's priorities don't match mine. And so one of the things that I'm trying to do is just keep on hammering the same message, what my expectations are for combustibles, what my expectations are for egress, things like that. And where I have, the benefit that I have is, is we have, we're in the building several times a year. We're in the building, it's required by law that I get in the building, you know, so many X number of days after the school opens. So we do one inspection before the building opens. We show up and we practice egress within the first week of school. And so that's an opportunity for me to go in there with four or five firefighters and walk the building and do another check. Because what happens, or what's the variable between those two dates, is that the children's, the teachers occupy the space, and they start to decorate their classrooms and things like that. And that's traditionally the, 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 the condition that calls for me to be a little more stern or take corrective action. So my job's relatively easy compared to Nate's.
Do you have any concerns over, now with more and more doors and windows going in, there's less material stored behind the building, but are things going in the right direction, or you can work with them?
So one of the things that has to be in place, obviously if there's any obstructions or limitations to access around the building, when the building's occupied, that needs to change. I need to have access around the building so I can deploy a hose line where I need to deploy it, things like that. It can't be slowed down in that building. So that's one of the things that I'll be, I'll be checking for at the last minute.
Excellent.
So to be more specific, I think right now we have a whole bunch of stuff, materials on the basketball court, right? Isn't that one of the places where the children go out to practice like a fire drill? Isn't that a point? So would the school need to?
Update their egress plan.
Update it, okay. All right.
That's correct. And it's something that I, that, we're going through that process right now with the, with the middle school, actually, they wanna update their egress plan. So it's not, it's not unusual for that to happen. It's something that, that I'll like, we'll look at the, the plan and, and we'll test it, actually, and to see, we, we record all their evacuation times for all their, their fire drills. We have them on record. So obviously, we'd compare it to the old data to see if we've improved the situation or made it worse.
Okay. So do we know from, have you worked with the principal or anything on letting them know that we're gonna have to do that, or do they know that already?
No, that's not something that I've discussed specifically with the principal of that school, but that's, that's generally the, I think that's the, that's, that would be the point of contact or the approach for the, for that, for that measure, that's for sure.
Okay.
I can verify tomorrow at the meeting that, that they're aware of that and...
Yeah, if you could do that.
You can verify it right now if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Do you have any more questions than all of them, before, before Jose goes on?
More specific, I mean, you know, like...
Is the second floor not being finished problematic for either one of you, for the building commissioner or the fire chief?
So last week's meeting, I explained to them that just because a, a portion of the building isn't occupied, doesn't give them relief from the fire code. So like, things like plywood on windows, they're not necessarily a fire code violation. They might be another requirement that's outside of my purview. But I just reminded them that just because the space isn't occupied, doesn't relieve them from the fire code, because there's really no separation from that part of the building to the occupied part of the building. It's, it's a fire started on the second floor, it would be a hazard to everyone, not, not just because it's vacant, it doesn't become a hazard.
Okay.
Just curiosity question on anything, so when the, you'll go through and you and the school will go through your egress test during the first week or so, if the, will they have to redo that a couple times as things outside change and materials are moved around, or what is the recommendation generally just?
So I'm the authority having jurisdiction. If, if, if there's conditions that change, life safety conditions change, they're obligated to let me know. And then I'm obligated to be vigilant. I'm obligated to either drive through the property now and then, stop in, or designate somebody to do that for me. And if I'm satisfied with that plan and there's no alterations to how things are stored, where the evacuation areas would be, then they continue on. If I'm, if I, if I'm not satisfied, the plan that the egress times weren't satisfactory, then we'll have to come up with a, with a plan B. And we'll be in the, we'll be in the school a minimum of three more times after that first plan, if it goes well.
Any other questions that are not fire related? Or tangentially?
Probably just for the school.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is Deirdre going to be representing the district this evening, or?
Maybe.
All right. Come on up and join us.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Can I follow up on a question, an answer from the chief?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, name for the record.
My name is Deirdre Farrell Welch. My first name is Spelties and David, E I R D R E. My last name is Two Words, first is Farrell, Effison Frank, A R R E L L, space Welch, W E L C H. You're welcome. I am the interim director of finance for the regional school district.
All right, go ahead. You'd like to answer one of the questions the chief had?
Yes. One of the first conversations I had with the chief was how are our annual inspections? And he specifically asked me about egress times. We talked about them. And so after we talked about the report from last year, I got on the phone with principals. And the reason the middle school is looking at their egress was because the times last year, as the chief has indicated, were not up to what we want to have happen. Anytime there is a physical building change like the chief has identified, the school department must update all their egress plans, their safety plans, their evacuation plans. And if it's temporary, we have to go back and redo either those plans or redrill, I'm sorry, redrill the students. Once they get back to the second floor, for example, we will drill the students when they're on the second floor. Those kinds of things are mandated by certainly law, but it's also common sense in the safety environment for our kids, so.
Appreciate that. All right. I have one quick question, is a clarifying question, I think for Joe, just before you go on. I'm looking at the district's calendar now. I heard earlier, and I may have misheard, that's why I'm asking, I heard the Sunday before Labor Day was the target for having one hundred and seventy-five windows in, but that's technically the third, and it looks like the week of the twenty-eighth are when the new teacher mentoring and such is happening. So just curious if our target is August twenty-seventh or September third for the main project here?
So the...
Is that a question for me, I'm sorry?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. The, the goal for the priority areas was to have those areas done prior to the children returning to school. It was not, it was not around the date when the teachers come back, which is August twenty-ninth. So the date that one hundred and seventy-five windows would be done?
Yep.
The priority areas that we've identified, that date is the Sunday before Labor Day, whatever date that is for sure.
Okay, but the children will have been, if I'm looking at the calendar correct, in school a couple days?
So if I could follow up, Joe, and answer the question from the district's school calendar's perspective?
Yep.
We have new teacher orientation on August twenty-eighth?
Okay.
And August twenty-ninth. All teachers in the district are reporting August thirtieth and August thirty-first.
All right, so you're...
Children, we're looking forward to on September fifth. Kindergarten students are starting a few days later, September seventh. That's the district's calendar.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I saw opening day on eight-thirty, and that sounded like kids are back. But then I see over in September, we have nine-five, first day of school, so slightly, slightly different.
Opening day is the day for our teachers to come together to the auditorium. We bring staff together, custodial staff, introduce the year together, so it's an opening day for staff.
Okay, so nine-three is the target.
Nine-three is the Sunday target that Joe is speaking to.
Right, okay. Thank you for taking the time to clarify that. Okay. Do you have any, any general comments on the project you'd like to share with us before any other questions?
Thank you. I came to Freetown Lakeville Regional School District with, as a retired school administrator, but I brought twenty years of school construction with me, both under the way we used to do at SBA and now how we're doing it under MSBA. This is a phased occupied construction project. It was brought to town meeting as a phased occupied construction project. We are ahead of that schedule regarding that phased occupied construction project, and we're thrilled to have the project team in place that we have. I've worked with a lot of owner's project managers and a lot of construction site folks, and the team here is cohesive, and we've worked together very, very well. I'll hold this up just for you. This is my cheat sheet. Everybody has these fancy, smancy things. I walk around with this. This with all my markings has been what the district has used by meeting with the principal, the director of curriculum, the director of special education, on how are we going to manage a phased occupied construction project? Here are our priority, priority areas, excuse me, the contractor says it's the whole building, and I say, yes, it is. So we have been able to work together as a project team to bring the yellow areas much greater to the project floor plan. All your classrooms on the fourth, first floor are priority areas. We made a decision as a project team to continue the second floor with plywood but natural light and not service educationally students on the second floor. We're going to bring art into the classroom. We're going to bring music instruction into the classroom, just like we did during COVID. We're experts. From an educational standpoint, the beautiful thing there, wait till you see these educational rooms, these areas. Some of the windows are in, the natural light is stunning. To save your music and art room on the second floor, to have that natural light come in for the opening up those classrooms is, is a wonderful thing to have happen. This is an MSBA project under the accelerated repair project program. That program is frozen in the Commonwealth. No school district in the Commonwealth can get on that program. It has been frozen because of the cost of construction in the Commonwealth. Only new school buildings are being built at this particular point in the Commonwealth. No roof repair, no HVAC repair, no more windows and doors. Congratulations, Lakeville, you got in fifty-three percent on the dollar, and the difference in these classrooms is absolutely stunning. Last week in walking the site, we also ran into the commissioning agent. MSBA requires you to have a commissioning agent that oversees the project from the perspective of commissioning. You know how you see the big boat going into the water and someone does the champagne? They are commissioning that boat to float. Your commissioning agent that's hired and paid for by MSBA a hundred percent, it's not even your cost share, comes down and commissions every single one of those windows. How do you commission a window? You run water all day long on it to make sure these gaps are not present at the time of commissioning. If you're, if you fail commissioning, MSBA steps in, they come to the project team, we work together as a team to come up with our hunch list items to ensure that commissioning occurs and that the town of Lakeville is eligible for every last red cent that you're eligible for. It is a wonderful project through the accelerated repair project at MSBA. As someone who's been building for twenty years, accelerated repairs for the schools in our Commonwealth must continue to happen. You're not gonna continue to build new buildings in various cities and towns, so the legislature is now looking at how are we going to continue to fund not only new schools, but keep our beloved schools in our towns through accelerated repair, so.
Has, has the commissioning been done so far on all these windows?
So I'm gonna toss that to Joe, 'cause he's the expert on the commissioning process.
Okay. The commissioning agent's been involved with the project right from the beginning as part of submittal review, or I should say, design review. And then also the submittals from the contractor on the products to be used, they were involved in the submittal review. They're also now involved in our progress meetings, and we're scheduling, they have a six or eight visit calendar that they have planned for this project, and we're scheduling with them the critical activities to have their, their visits, their site visits land where they can get the most value out of their commissioning process. But I'm glad you mentioned the commissioning, they are overseeing from the MSBA's perspective, make sure that the project is performed in accordance with the plan and specs, and that the district gets a good product.
So I, I do have a question. I appreciate your, your narrative, and trust me, we know that we were doing a good thing. We alerted the residents pretty early on that we were gonna be asking for this money because we knew how special it was and that it was, you know, on the decline, and I'm really glad that town meeting approved it. But we can have the best of everything, but I'm still curious why the school never created a contingency plan. Just in case we're not done in time. Is there a contingency plan just in case we're not done in time? For the students to go back to school? It'll be Zoom learning, will it be?
At this particular point in time, school starts September fifth. School will open September fifth, and we are moving forward for that opening.
Okay, so if school doesn't open on September fifth, which I hope it does, what will the plan be?
I am not prepared to present to the board as the interim director of finance without a school committee and superintendent conversation, the discussions at hand with respect to school not opening on September fifth. School will open on September fifth.
Do we know if they've had those conversations?
There have been preliminary conversations that would have increased if that new schedule wasn't handed out last Tuesday. That schedule that we have been working on with the director of curriculum, the director of special education, the entire district, the principal on student movement, along with the project team, has been focused on these classrooms and opening schools September fifth. The conversations to any elevated level would have started last week if we hadn't gotten the schedule that we anticipated as the tenant to open up school on September fifth. Joe will tell you that during these meetings, Deirdre, I know what you're doing. Keep doing it, and I've kept doing it. And I'm here to tell you we're opening up school September fifth.
And I think all of us are absolutely in the district's corner that that will happen. I think what we're asking is, you can't, not you, we humans can't control everything. And if the weather takes a sudden turn, or the installation crew already sudden comes down with COVID or something, was there any thought given to what might happen in the hopefully very, very, very unlucky circumstance? That we've got to make a call on a certain date and say, we're going to do something different because something completely out of our control has happened now.
Are we wrong?
I think that's all that we're asking.
Are we wrong to ask this question?
You're asking the wrong person, I'm so sorry. Um, I can tell you that those conversations have been had. Those conversations were not elevated based on the schedule that was presented to the owner by the owner's project manager with the gentleman in the audience in attendance at the meeting. There was no cause for concern to elevate any secondary opening of school plan at this juncture.
Other than the unknown, basically.
It would.
Right, I mean.
Comfortable at my statement to you, thank you so very much.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Uh, any thoughts?
I think the school committee's meeting Wednesday.
Wednesday evening.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm hoping they're getting a similarly detailed update.
They have my five-page report.
Well, it's just because, you know, according to the regional agreement, we're responsible for the school. But we are not the ones responsible for a contingency plan in case the school doesn't open.
Correct.
But we are, you know, the face of the school. So, uh, you know, I, I think it's imperative that we ask that question. And we're really, I mean, would you not say this is a tight, tight schedule right now?
I would say that this is a phased occupied construction project that was bought to town meeting in November of twenty-twenty-two that is ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Ahead of schedule.
Okay, I just want it clear that, you know.
I've heard you, yes, thank you.
If, if things don't go as planned, and I hope they do, I really hope they do, because I would not want to be a parent who finds out next week that I need to find coverage for my kids because they're going to be remote learning for a few weeks into September. I really hope it goes, you know, the way it does. But I do think that, you know, I hope the school district will say something different Wednesday night in making some kind of a plan, or at least alerting parents. You know, we can't control some things like testing and, you know, um, things get delayed. Every construction is something called punch list items. Okay. Well, we tried, right?
Well, I mean, you've got to answer that there isn't one.
Right, there isn't one, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Um, Mr. LeCamer, you have a question? All right. If we can keep it concise, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Quite a ways in that one.
Uh, Rich LeCamer, Old Five Halls Road. I guess I'm a little bit confused because it sounds like this is the first time that we've heard that only sixty percent of the windows are going to be installed before school opens. Is that true?
No, the way the project was set.
I'm sorry, I'm not asking the question. I'm asking, I'm asking the chairman.
Joe will take it. Um, so in the updates that we've been getting, we've been told that the priority areas will be done by school opening, which we've now clarified is actually the Sunday before Labor Day. We've been informed that doors will continue after the fact. I think what, you know, we're at sixty-one percent, so fifty-nine percent of the windows, I'm looking at the map here, is provided to us. The whole upper floor has to be redone afterwards. Um, I think this is the first time, correct me if I'm wrong, that we've gotten an actual work schedule that's going to take place after the opening day of school.
Right.
Um, so the last few weeks, I want to say we've gotten one, two, or three versions of this priority plan. And so far, everybody's been saying this priority plan will be completed by the first day of school.
Well, I'm confused because, uh, the superintendent, he's not here to defend himself. Multiple times has told, has told the community, the parents, that all the windows are going to be in by, before school opened. I mean, multiple, multiple letters. And as a matter of fact, just in the, um, uh, the newspaper, said the exact same thing. So now we're finding out that that's not the case at all.
Yep, and I'm.
I'd be upset if I was a parent, you know, that that didn't happen, is not going to happen.
Right.
So I was surprised to find out, and I've been following the project, um, that this was going to happen. So the, the second question I have will be the question, if you're going to be putting windows in the, um, in the ones that aren't installed, what kind of windows are going in there?
That's a question that we've asked, and so far we've been told Lexan slash Plexiglas. Now, I've got either Lexan slash Plexiglas. However, I certainly would have additional questions. I'd probably look at the building commissioner, since I know he spoke to, you know, hurricane season coming. And are those something that can be secured?
So the, the students and the teachers, the staff, they're going to be in those classrooms. There'll be no ventilation in that classroom from any windows?
I don't believe the new windows, do the new windows open for ventilation? They're not egress.
They do, they open.
They do have the pole handles on?
They must because there's no HVAC system.
Yeah, that I can't speak to. Um, I agree in your comment, though, the district has put out numerous newsletters that said the project would be completed before the opening of school.
Except for the doors.
Nope. June eleventh, June eighteenth, and there was another newsletter that said the project would be complete.
Be complete, which is never the original plan.
Right, right, so it certainly caused some miscommunication, and I don't think I've seen a retraction.
Are the screens available and the ones that are already in to be installed?
Yes.
Okay, what about the, um, the shades and stuff? When are they going to be installed?
Uh, we had a discussion about that last week, the south-facing windows. We want to make sure those are in before the students return. And, uh, we'll find out tomorrow what the project is like and see if maybe we can get all of the priority areas to include the shades.
The reason why I bring it up is that those classrooms, if you go, if it gets hot in September, it's going to be a serious problem because they.
Yeah, that comment was brought up exactly, uh, at the last meeting, stated exactly that.
Okay, my, my last question, uh, Brian, is, um, can you ask the town administrator what's included in the contract for the contractor to clean that building?
Uh, we can certainly do that and come back on September fifth with an answer. I'm not going to have him point-blank ask right now. If he knows at the moment, he's free to speak up. If we don't, then we can certainly look and come back.
I believe the contract call, uh, requires the, to, to, um, Joe, you can chime in if I'm incorrect about this. Requires the contractor to, um, mediate the space and clean it and make it usable.
Which it sounds like they've been doing as they go from window to window. And then the district's janitorial crew comes in.
So the, the school is required, then, they're just going to sweep the floors or whatever. The school is required then to clean all the equipment, the furniture, wax the floors and so forth between now and Labor Day.
I would look to Mr. Goodwin for further detail on that. That's his crew that is in charge of that.
And corridors and all the other.
Again, I would look to Mr. Goodwin and hit his schedule.
I, I just think that's a problem.
It, it's a problem if it's not possible within the timeframe allotted. But the gentleman indicated earlier that it seemed like you, you felt confident that all of your tasks would be completed.
I do.
Okay, appreciate that.
I do have a question on the term substantial completion. Maybe we can ask Nate to come up? Sorry, Nate.
You've got another agenda item anyway, so.
So the term substantial completion is what's in the contract. And it was supposed to be substantial completion by the time the students go back to school. In my, the way I read the contract when we received it just two weeks ago.
Something sounds right.
Um, it was all the windows to be in. I know from speaking to you that it's the architect that determines what substantial completion is. So, uh, does that mean we keep moving the goalposts according to what? Do we have any say in what substantial completion means?
So I, I would defer to Ari as far as contract execution. Um, but substantial completion for the purposes of closing out a building permit is everything is done. So, you know, when we're looking at building permits, we're looking at where it is compensation. We're looking at liability insurance, these type of things. Um, when I'm requested a, a final inspection, I'll get all of the final closeout documentation, um, which will include access controls, which will include, uh, egress, um, structural, um, all components of the project. At that point, I'll close out the permit and I'm done. As far as, um, verification on substantial completion, it's my understanding that that would be a decision through the architect and then agreed upon, uh, by the owner's project manager for recommendation for substantial completion.
Okay.
Oh, no, so, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I also know that the date for substantial completion has been pretty consistent through this whole thing. Tell us until October twentieth.
Okay. All right.
So if work proceeds as we're being told and we get to October twentieth, hopefully that becomes a non-issue.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate something that I said at the last meeting that, um, for anyone who may not know, our building commissioner Nate Darling and our fire chief, Mike O'Brien, will do whatever they can, because I know them both very well, to make sure their end of, you know, um, of getting these kids back to school on time takes place. I just want to thank you in advance for that. And I just know, you know, just knowing you that, you know, I wish you had been called in sooner into the process, into the meetings. Um, but I, I'm really glad you're, you've both been, you know, part of the last couple, couple meetings. I feel a little bit better knowing that you're both on board. And I do appreciate, I know both of you jumped this right to the top of your to-do list. So, you know, that, I appreciate that, so.
Thank you. Uh, next regular project meeting, is that tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so interested in hearing anything we get back from that walk around. Uh, if there's no other discussion, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
I'd like to just say thank you for, um, Mr. Chairman, putting this on the agenda. I think that, um, it's one thing when we get updates, um, on projects and things that are happening, but it gives us a chance when, you know, all the, the players are brought together um, so that we can all hear the information at the same time, especially in a project this big. And, you know, the impact of, you know, what it means to get these, um, you know, windows and doors installed by the timeframe that we have established, so. But I just wanted to say thank you. It was nice to meet you, Joe, because I didn't meet you.
Yes, Joe, thank you for spending. Madam, go ahead, I apologize that I missed you earlier.
Cherry beer, six has a month circle. Um, as a former teacher, first of all, I'm going to say thank you very much to you folks at the town of Lakeville, um, to the former school committee that worked on this project and got it off the ground after multiple times that we applied for this project. Um, secondly, I am concerned, and I guess maybe, Joe, this might go to you first. Um, the Sunday before Labor Day, that's when you feel so completion is enough so that people can get into the building?
No.
Teachers, staffs.
You could actually, you could occupy the building as of today. It just means that some, uh, windows may not be installed by that date. So the building is always, it would always be able to be occupied. And, you know, as far as whether school can open, it's, school most definitely can't open. And the building can be occupied today. It just means there would be less natural light in certain areas of the building.
As a former teacher, I say the building can be open, but actually it's the staff that needs to get in and prepare the classrooms, the building. First impressions will last in the beginning of school is probably the most important time of the year. So you're saying the teachers would be able to get in earlier than the Sunday before?
Uh, yes, and Deirdre made that very clear. Teachers are getting the time that they need in the building.
We, we won't commit Joe to that answer. We'll let the district speak to that if they'd like to, so. But Ms., Ms. Barron, would you, would you say in your career, how often before the first day of children arriving would you typically, as a former educator, hope to have to prepare your space and make it what you want?
Probably about three weeks is when most teachers start.
Three weeks.
Actually, it's August first when everyone says summer's over, it's time to kick in here and think about it. I was at Free Town Elementary School today, I just happened to be in the area, I drove by.
Yep.
There were at least twenty cars there, so those teachers are already in and getting prepared.
Okay.
It's a lot to prepare a classroom, especially an elementary school classroom for, um, the introduction of orientation and kindergarten in particular. But first through third grade, you know, those are so important. Those, uh, first day of school, everybody talks about the first day of school.
Yep.
It's an important time.
Yep, all right.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mrs. Barron.
Thank you.
Thank you again for all your time. Yes, I think it'd be useful, and then we'll try to move on.
We don't have these in the school department, so if you roll, sorry.
Either don't move or they go across the whole room.
Uh, so Joe, uh, called me on my way up the drive today. And I have held, like, August thirtieth, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth. He keeps wanting in, and I keep saying, no, you cannot have those days, Joe. We have a guy on his crew that lives in town and says, hey, my kid isn't going to school until September fifth. So Joe says, I want all of those days. And I say, Joe, teachers have got to get to their classrooms. They have to set up their classrooms. You cannot have those days. If you send Ari an email tomorrow, Ari, you cannot approve those days. This is what we're talking about. We have got to get teachers into their classrooms. So the answer, Joe, no.
So it's a, best case, we're looking to give him about a week. So it'll be a little compressed, but that's, that's what we're targeting.
It, it'll be a little compressed, that is exactly what we're targeting. And we're trying, we're not doing popsicles on the playground, but we're thinking about pumpkins in the park. Whatever we can do to meet, greet, find your seat and get into that building.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, I think we'll call it there. Um, so we'll move on, although we do have a number of other folks in the room for certain items. Um, Nate, not to put you on the spot, but is the only thing you have left, the Sealer's weights and measures?
It is.
Would you like to pony up and talk to us about that? We'll bounce forward to Agenda Item eleven. Discuss some possible vote on job description for Sealer of Weights and Measures. Find my place.
I'd just like to request to do, please, anything else?
Yes, sir, appreciate all your time in, uh, answering all our questions. I know it's not easy to put on the hot seat, but we were dying for the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You as well. Evening, sir.
Yeah, good evening. So, um, longtime Sealer of Weights and Measures for Lakeville, Dave Ennis, he's been with us for twenty-one years. Um, he let me know that he's looking at moving on. He's had a couple of, um, job opportunities that have now, um, taken on most of his time, and he can no longer work for the town of Lakeville. He is going to stay in the position until which time we fill the position, so he's not going to leave us out there. So he hasn't actually, uh, provided a, a letter saying that he's, he's resigning. But, um, we wanted to get ahead of this. So we did a little research, tried to find a job description currently approved by the select board, um, for the town.
select board, um, for the Town of Lakeville for this position and, um, we were unable to find when we checked with HR. Uh, they also scoured their records and couldn't find one, so there was a little delay. Uh, Cleverton Dunphy, obviously the, uh, previous HR director was quite helpful in this, she works for me now and, um, she drafted this using a few other municipalities, uh, as, as templates. Important thing to note here is it is statutorily required to have a Sealer of weights and measures. Um, they go around and certify all measuring devices in the Town of Lakeville. Um, you know, with the, uh, influx of marijuana facilities, we do see an awful lot coming from those, a lot of demand, uh, new devices need to be certified and, um, as well as gas stations and supermarkets and everything else.
All right.
So, you have the draft job description in front of you.
We do.
Um, we're not asking for any additional funding, um, we're just going to prorate, um, the current Sealer of weights and measures, uh, timed throughout the calendar year with the, uh, with the new ones, so there's just going to be, I guess, a transfer of power, if you will.
All right, appreciate it.
I will miss seeing his name.
Yes.
On the, on the gas pump and, and everywhere else.
The good news is, um, because it's such a, I mean, in my, my mind, it's an older trade, you don't see a lot of younger folks getting into this. Um, it's like, you know, you look at the old statue, the fence driver and steel view. You know, this is just something that we've had, we do have, uh, an older generation that, that's doing it. Lucky for us, Dave has got an excellent reputation, so he's reached out to some of the people that do this, um, that are interested in the position, so I have, no doubt we'll be able to fill it, uh, once the job description is approved.
Okay. Any questions on the, uh, draft job description as presented to us?
Um, just one on the last page, um, and maybe this is something that we can consider, um, going forward when we update our job descriptions and postings. Um, the last line, when, um, you know, please contact, and we usually have, you know, the name of the HR director, um, I like to try to keep it general, so, you know, please contact the human resource department at 508-946-8808. Um, I mean, that was a suggestion I was hoping to put forward with, you know, other job descriptions, but this came out in front of us, so.
Right, right.
I personally think that's a, that's a great idea and then when the job does actually get posted, who it posted, whoever is in that position at that given time, but the job description itself, it's not necessary to be that specific.
Correct.
Yep. All right, any other questions on what's before us?
Nope, I agree with, uh, Lorraine's.
All right.
I mean, I know what Dave does, so.
Yeah, 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 I mean, it's pretty much a like-for-like, what he's doing is being put on paper, essentially, right, so. All right, uh, interesting motion to approve the job description as presented before us this evening?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, passing unanimously, thank you Nate, appreciate it, thank Cleverton for us as well, if you would.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Don't make that change on the.
Yeah, I believe so, just have to create a generic email account for that. Representative Oral, are you tonight? Are you here for, um, the article that your office has been involved with lately? All right, um, so, uh, let's skip down to item 16, if we may. Discuss some possible vote on revisions to annual town meeting article 14, recall of elected official as requested by House Counsel. Um, so, we have Representative Oral this evening, who we've been working with, and his staff, um, we also have Ms. Randazzo here from Town Council. Um, so I will, uh, let the two of you take it away if you'd like, let's duke it up.
Sure.
No, no. I thought it would be easiest if I came and I, I've been in discussions with Senator Roderick, who of course, obviously is working on this, uh, with me to get a legislation passed. But we decide since I'm just down the road, I can cover for him tonight. So, I've been seeing some emails, I've gotten some emails from constituents, et cetera, about the changes that have been posted as part of the packet for tonight. And so I just wanted to kind of just explain the process a little bit more, so everybody's up to speed, including the public. That the, the, if you recall, the, the petition article started with a petition to the selectmen to place an article on town meeting, uh, that met its requirements. That article included language that, uh, if the art passed town meeting, uh, it would go to the legislature, in which case, if there were changes necessary, those changes could be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Some home rule articles don't include that language. This one did, so that's kind of why we're here tonight. So, the language was discussed at town meeting, there were some issues, I think Town Council had some issues with language, certainly, uh, various members of the public and or boards had some issues with the language, but having been there, it seemed like the sense was, Town Meeting wanted to move it forward, sent it to the legislature, understanding that we would look at constitutionality and other issues, language, et cetera. So, uh, it has to both go through House and Senate, so it starts on one and then goes to the other, so we started in the House. So, I submitted the language that was sent to us, approved by Town Meeting, that went to House Counsel for the language to check it, because in these home rule petitions for legislation, it doesn't go to the Attorney General like most other town articles go to. So, the legislative, we have House Counsel and Senate Counsel, both get a crack at it. In this case, uh, prior to filing it, the House Counsel started, they, uh, sent several comments that was sent back to the Board of Selectmen to fulfill that option to change things, uh, through this Board of Selectmen. Then I believe, uh, Selectmen sent that, some of the issues had questions that needed filling in. And most of it from the House Counsel was more clerical in nature. Um, it went to Town Council, I understand, and then Town Council, uh, came up with an additional change that they brought back to the Selectmen, which had to do, um, with, with the first paragraph, if I recall, but basically had to do with whether or not the school committee should or could be included in a recall. So, that language is probably the only major change to the original article that is to be discussed tonight. From the legislature standpoint, again, with these home rules, where we want to file what the intent of the town, its people and, and its elected officials are. So, we're not weighing in on whether or not a committee or one or another elected official should be included. We can, we can go whichever way is the, you know, the way that the board in this case, given the approval in the article, to make changes, would like to make. So, as it stands now, it's up for you folks to discuss and potentially vote on a, a version that you want us to file. I would though, uh, in talking with Senator Roderick, he wanted to make sure you were also aware that at some point, Senate Counsel will review the language. And if there are changes, which usually there are little things that, you know, we are separate branches, that one comes up with it, the other one didn't come up with, then it may have to come back for other additional changes. Particularly with this one, where like I said, I think even in town meeting was recognized that, you know, th- th- these were members of the public that came up with the language in various manners, so we're, we're all trying to work with their intent and make it fit what the intent of that language was, so we're letting the attorneys, I guess I should say, work things out.
Too many attorneys.
Too many attorneys, and of course, but that's, my intent of saying all that is just to lay out the process, so this is, it's just, it's normal, it's, there's nothing unusual going on, other than this one takes a little more effort because it wasn't, it wasn't generated by the, the elected officials or a board of the town, which at that point would have had Town Counsel draft the original language. So, we're trying to take the original language that was, you know, uh, homegrown, which is kind of neat, because it's neat that you can do that here in, in this country and in this state. But we're trying to take that and make the intent final. So, just to lay that out there, there's nothing unusual, and the fact that maybe the Senate will have comments that will come back later on. The Senator Roderick and I are trying to work that out to minimize that, so we may come up with some ways to get around that.
Well, I, I think you just touched on what my first question would be, and thank you for the outlining that process, which was, you know, if, if House Counsel has changes and if we vote to, we'll call it, adopt those changes, and then if the Senate gets it and they get a crack at it, and then if we have some other ones to change, do we have to send it back to House again, or are we? Or is it now like, depends on the changes?
Welcome to the legislature. Welcome to the legislature.
Normally you guys would what, have a council together and duke it out?
On, on, let's just say on, on non, non-home rule bills where you guys wouldn't be dragged in the mix, um, we go back and forth on lots of things and procedurally, yes, if there's a change in the bill that the House sends to the Senate, uh, the Senate adopts different language than the House adopted, then it would come back to the House for concurrence and at that point, there's multiple procedural options that could happen.
Right.
Uh, starting with the easy one, which is we concur. And, and then it'd be a simple vote to say, yes, we accept that language, uh, up to including what happens, uh, like with the budget and then major bills, which typically happens is conference committees to hammer out the differences, but on something like this, we would try to work it out and that's what, like I say, the, the Senator and I are brainstorming to take this language here tonight, uh, at least even if you don't vote on it as final language, if you can give us an indication of, yep, we're good with this, then, you know, we're trying to work out, well, maybe we can have it, run it past Senate Counsel before we actually file it, so that we're starting out fresh, so it doesn't get into that one version in the House, second version, even though that, like I say, is not that unusual and can be worked out fairly easily. Because it, it comes down to what's the intent of the, i- i- it would come back to you, for instance, if the Senate came up with different, uh, changes, it would come back to you again for approval, and if you said, no, we don't want that, then most likely, the Senate would, you know, say, okay, and, uh, and, and go forward, but.
Yeah, because I think there's, there's a, an eagerness of the public to get this done.
Yep.
Which I think all of us support and there's just this, you know, many, many layers of red tape we're now working through.
There's, there's a reason why there's a phrase, uh, it's, it's, you know, about not being easy to get something through Congress, or it takes an act of Congress, it, it's, it's just, it, anything to do with changing law in legislation just takes a while and there's lots of procedures and like I say, it would, it actually has to go through three branches, Senate, House and Executive, so.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Just want to clarify for one thing, there was about the, um, regional school question?
Yes.
So, the, that was not, that was not identified in the House Counsel's, it was something that Town Counsel identified. I told Town Counsel to go ahead and discuss that with House Counsel and, and knowing that we bring it back to the Select Board, to subject it to Select Board's approval, so there's no, there's no, just wanted to clarify that there was no previous approval of that change one way or the other, I think it's before you tonight.
So, it wouldn't be a surprise if they see that at House Counsel.
House Counsel has seen that, but I didn't want you, I didn't want the board to be surprised, this is something that was just, um, Council felt, and it feels appropriate then to get, you know, there's no point in bringing someone to the Select Board if House Counsel hasn't signed off on it first, so we're going to make sure it's scheduled with House Counsel.
Does anybody else have questions, sir? Representative Oral, before perhaps we ask Ms. Randazzo to weigh in?
Yeah, and like I said, I just want to lay out kind of the background and then we can get into the actual, uh, changing of language for that, for the school committee.
I mean, the vast majority of it, like you said, appears to be clerical or actually strengthening language, to be more clear.
Yeah.
Um, which was good to see. Ms. Randazzo, would you like to weigh in on anything?
So, I was there, Nate, right?
Yes, yep.
You folks remember I had identified some issues and I think that the amendments do largely try to address some of those issues, in particular, the timeframe for being able to hold a recall election and, and.
Right.
So, um, but the issue with the regional school district is, you know, I, I, if I'm remembering, May, it seems so long ago, but I, I did highlight that for you as an issue. And the regional school district, as you know, is a separate legal entity. There is a special act that is, that mirrors your regional school district agreement that talks about these, these members on the regional school district committee being elected by a dis- the district, right? So, if you remember your ballots, it'll have a Freetown person or multiple people and have Lakeville and everybody from both towns can vote on it. And so, we consider that to be a, a, an official of the district and not necessarily of a single town. Yes, it's true that, that certain members have to be nominated and residents of each town, but they are voted on by the collective district-wide vote, right? And so, you know, just in our view, because we have seen this in other communities, where the language is any town official, we've, we've had people come up and say, how do I take out a recall petition for a regional school district committee member? In our view is, is that a single town recall act would not do that unless, and there's sort of one exemption, is, is some regional school districts, their local school committee serves as their delegates or representatives on the regional school. So, you are simultaneous, you are a town official and ex officio serving on the regional school district, so, am I getting too convoluted?
No, I had a question, in that, in that example, does that mean in those examples, like if that's how we operated, the Lakeville voters only vote for those delegates and the Freetown voters would only vote for those delegates?
Well, you'd actually be, in, in those example, you, in the example I just gave, you'd be voting for the Lakeville School Committee. And then by virtue of how you've set up your regional school district, there would be, um, you know, by, they would be designated as your representatives on the regional school district committee. But, but when the regional school district first, I don't know if it was when it first came into formation or if it was just sort of shortly thereafter, that, and if you look at your agreement, you'll see it, there's sort of two alternatives for how those positions are elected. And the second alternative was if that special legislation passes, right, and it did in 2012 and it sets forth this district-wide election process, um, for those. So, you know, the intent in putting that in was just to actually avoid confusion, which we could see happening 10 years from now, when someone comes into the town clerk's office and says, I want to take out a recall position, petition for the Lakeville seat or seats on the regional school district. And you come to the lawyers and the lawyers are going to say, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work. Now, I mean, the legis, a- as I said at town meeting, right, there's no actual provision in state law that allows for any recall, right? So, it has, and elections are strictly governed by state law, so that's why you need the legislature's approval to adopt a recall bylaw, right? Um, you know, the legislature giveth, take it, I mean, you know, we, we often joke and say, hey, look, if you can get it past the legislature, you can do whatever you want, but I, I don't see that as being, in this instance, realistic in this present format, because you would really, and I would expect someone either on a House or Senate side, a House or Senate Counsel, um, to raise the question, right, where someone's, you know, could, could, could Lakeville come in and say, we want to remove this person that was voted in by a combined Lakeville-Freetown electorate? It seems, it just, it's a little one-sided, so.
In your research, did you come across any district-wide recall provisions out there?
Aethol, Royalston.
Aethol, Royalston?
And, you know, unfortunately, there's not, you know, the, the ability to file this home rule petition for special acts for cities and towns, it doesn't necessarily apply to the regional school district. And so, you know, we've been kicking, understanding that this is obviously a question folks have, you know, we have been talking about it and, 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 you know, we would think that there would need to be, to effectuate it, right, because I know folks have been asking, well, how do we do it, right? I think there would need to be at least supporting votes of both towns at town meetings, but that, and, and the, and the district, I think the regional school district committee would have to express support for it, but then the legislators could submit it, I mean, it would be on behalf of the district. And so, one town on its own, I don't think could do it on its own, and I don't think the two towns could join together to do a home rule petition necessarily, because that authority is limited to acts on behalf of one town or another. So, you know, I couldn't, it couldn't be any more complicated, but there are several, in, I mean, you know, it's not atypical and I'm sure Representative Oral could be much more, um, could speak to this as well, but it's not atypical for folks to reach out to the, you know, communities, to reach out to the legislators and say, hey, look, would you folks be willing to submit, uh, a bill, you know, o- on behalf of the school district? But when I say I think that there would need to be some buy-in by both towns in the regional school district, that's really not a, a legal requirement, but I think it's more from a political requirement, right, to ask your legislators or your representatives to pass something that impacts two towns and a separate legal entity, the regional school district, I think there'd need to be buy-in by everybody.
I have a question. So, if this gets approved, as soon as, let's say this, as soon as this gets approved, if Freetown copies the exact same thing and the exact same wording, including all elected officials and we don't change, can't both towns independently have an? can't both towns independently have an election to recall a, a regional school committee person?
And, and so again, you know, here's where the lawyers, you know, get legalese and tweaky, right? We don't view this as a town official position. It's a, it's a position of the regional school district. And so you're not tech, you know, i- i- it, it, can I say that there's no possible way that we might be able to come up with a solution? No, I can't tell you that. But I think it would require changing your regional school district agreement, which needs to be approved by the state, uh, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and quite possibly rescinding or amending that 2012 special act that sets forth the manner of electing um, the regional school district's school committee members. So it's not, it's not that simple, unfortunately. Um, which is why we felt that it was a good idea to make it clear in some fashion, because, and I think I pointed this out at town meeting, when you say any town official, people are going to automatically assume that that would include your, you know, the, the Lakeville members of the regional school district committee. And that's, I mean, it's understandable, right? Um, but when the town clerk then calls us and says, how do I do this? You know, that, our response is going to be, no, it doesn't cover that. And then wherever, and, and it, and it creates, I mean, it creates confusion. And, and when I was with you folks in May, I had just had this happen in, in another community. Um, and, you know, they went to the one town's town clerk and the other town town clerk, they got different answers. It was, you know, it, it, it wasn't great for the voters either, because they just felt like we had this on the books and we ought to be able to, to implement it.
I have a question.
Yep.
So outside of changing the regional agreement where, uh, each town independently would, um, vote on their delegates to the regional school district, changing that, what if the regional school district, could they put forth a petition?
So this is why I think, so under the home rule amendment and the, the, and, uh, I won't have it moving out, but, um, you know, that, that ability to exercise home rule is for cities and towns. It's not, it doesn't extend to the regional school district, right? So that's why I'm saying I think you would need buy-in from both towns and the regional school district, at least from the school committee. And I, I don't know if you, if you've talked about it with, with House or Senate Council and have a different view, but.
We haven't gotten that deep into it, but it, it, my question would be that in, in the case, select board member Carboni is describing, could the region, uh, submit an article to the, each board of selectmen asking for each town meeting, and maybe it requires a joint town meeting? I think that's how the original or the current regional agreement was done is in a joint town meeting. But could there, just the, the start comes from the regional, uh, from the region, from the, the school committee or et cetera?
The, the ask, I would say.
Yeah, yeah. And then petitions the selectman first to put an article on town meeting, possibly joint town meeting, so that everybody's in one place.
But wouldn't that require, that would require the school committee to have to vote to do it and not like this one, which was
Correct.
an independent petitioner.
Right.
So, I mean, so really, it's not the same.
Right.
It's not the same thing, because the school committee could say, nope, we don't want a recall, because we don't want to recall ourselves.
Or, or potentially.
And then there's no mechanism for the public to say.
Yep. So it, it's, all right, just step back, just for clarification. More or less, if I'm understanding you correctly, the, the language that, that's in there says elected.
District wide.
No, but, uh, in, in this, in, in this petition, in this, uh,
Oh, in the recall?
legislation, the recall legislation.
It just says it doesn't include.
Right, well, you, it was, that's what the proposal is to add that for clarification.
Correct.
But I'm asking, because it's, the original language says all, any elected official in the town, and, and you're trying to clarify to everyone that, that's fine. But just know that that doesn't, that language does not include
Yes.
someone elected to the region.
That's right.
So you can have that language exactly without changing it, but know that that's not considered an elected official in the town of Lakeville. It's an elected official of.
And I, and I probably, if I hadn't had this exact situation come up in another two-town regional school district, a couple of weeks or a month before, um, town meeting, you know, I don't know that I necessarily would have been as attuned. There's almost every recall bylaw says any official of the town, right? Um, but it happened. And so I really wanted to just flag that, that, that's a point of confusion and can be a point of confusion. And then as this thing has moved through the process with the House Council review, and we looked even further at your regional school district agreement and the special act. And again, I think it's a 2012 special act that expressly sets forth the manner in which those folks are elected. You know, they raised, there was, like, we peeled the onion even more and found additional reasons why. It, it, it seemed important to us to clarify that.
Makes sense to me, though. I get it.
Yeah, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask. It looks to my members to tell me. Um, but can we ask town council and House and Senate to say, what are the paths to making this possible? So that like, you give us a framework that says, because there's so many options we're already discussing tonight. I'm like, okay.
Right.
Four ways to do this.
Um, so in anticipation of the meeting, I did kick it around at the office. And as you know, you know, our managing attorney was also at the Elections Division for years before she came to KP. And, and we talked about it to see, because it's not in a statute, right? And, and I specifically was looking for, you know, there are some limited bases for which a regional school district can hold a district wide meeting. And I was like, oh, so maybe they do that. But that really is limited to, at least by statute, to situations where there's a budget problem.
Hmm.
Right? Where there's, where the towns, you know, are having a problem passing a, a, a regional school district budget.
Hmm.
Um, and, and that's, you know, really where we can, it seemed the, the most efficient way would be for there to be a request of the legislators to present a bill, right? Could be from both towns, right? Um, my indication that you'd probably want some town meeting action by both towns and the regional school district committee to sign off on is, is again, not, not a, um, necessarily a, a legal one, but more of a practical political consideration. Because if you're asking the legislature to pass something that affects more than one town, you know, to, to, I, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but usually they don't like it to be too controversial, right? They don't, they don't necessarily want to be, you know, adopt something that there's a significant, um,
And, and
pushback on.
And part of the politics is that I'm one of 160 House members and another 40 Senate members. So we, and obviously if you open to Free Town, there are two representatives for Free Town, so three representatives, one senator in this case. So we need, you know, we, ju- just because we even present it as a bill doesn't mean it will pass.
Right.
So we have to all be on the same page, mo- and, and requesting our colleagues to go with us in voting for this, because it does require the full, uh, 200 members of legislature to vote for it, and then the governor. So, you know, if, if there's not kind of a common agreement as to how to move forward, then even if one of us files it, and I fail, I filed plenty of bills, they don't always go through. Um, because it is, it is, uh, the entire body. With that said, maybe I suggest that maybe with some, a memorandum or something from town council, if it would be allowed back to us and between myself and the Senator, we can both huddle with the individual councils, Senate and House, and kick this around. You know, rather than doing it here tonight, we can come up with all kinds of ideas, but maybe come up with the best. Because I think the question I know I've been posed is, well, then how do we get a recall? Because we don't, we don't want to give the impression, I think the impression people are starting to get is, oh, well, you can't recall a, a school committee member? That, that, that's outrageous.
Right.
So it's just happens to be because of the way the regional agreement sets up the voting, uh, which includes both towns, which is somewhat unusual, I think.
But it, but it is one of the, there's a statute that says, these are the, you can have these different options. So it's not, I, I don't, I can't tell you percentage wise, like if it's
Yeah.
pre- you know, very typical or not, but it's, it's one of the options.
Yeah. And, and I think that was the intent, if I recall, being involved back when all that was happening in, in local government was, the intent was to give both towns a sense that they're all electing the school board, not just one town, so that one town doesn't have anything over the other. It was more like, hey, listen, let's all be equal. Everybody gets a vote. Now, if we have a little complication due to that, when it comes to the recall, let's try to figure that out with the best avenues forward.
I, I think that would be helpful, because to your point earlier, if it, if it's something that has to have buy-in from the district, we're now talking about eight members on a committee, which you only need to now sway four to say, no. And then we have no path forward from what I'm hearing, or at least no suggested path, right? Um, so.
Well, and that's, that's one of the reasons why, um, I'm questioning whether as this board, we should or shouldn't adopt this change or not adopt it. Because if we adopt the change, it says now all those folks that voted that night thinking they may be able to recall a school committee person, find out that we changed that for them.
Mm-hmm.
You see what I mean? Whereas, you know, I don't, knowing everything there is to know, I know that this is kind of the path, but we still have to tell a bunch of people that we changed it because it's a difficult path. And then, you know, if someone gets recalled and they read this and they say, oh, the original intent was whatever, they can, anyone can turn around and sue the town, because there's, they can say, well, it's, you know, discriminatory. If I knew I could never be recalled, I would have run for school committee. So I just, for some of these other changes, I have no problem correcting them for, you know.
And, and all of this really, again, we're, we're trying to, it hasn't been filed. This is all in an effort to get it the best language we can before filing.
Yep.
Then it goes through a whole process to, you know, so that, that just starts the beginning. This is just the, the pre- preliminary.
Yep.
Um, so, but I think it's worthwhile taking the time now
Yeah.
to get.
So let me use as an example, um, you know, on the, I don't even know what page number it is, but it says, um, it was a difference between qualified versus registered voters.
Right.
So the original petition said qualified. I think the intent, and I can, I feel confident the intent was registered voters. Someone who can sign a petition is registered to vote. So I feel okay making that kind of a change for everyone.
Right.
Even though if it was qualified voters, that would, I don't know who qualifies them, but technically that, they would have a pool of more people. But I don't think that was the intent on that one. And some of these other things are, you know, like you said, grammatical, you know, whatever. But on the, on the, I'm, you, you know, I'd really like to hear from, you know, Brian and Lorraine, how they feel about actually, you know, making that change, regardless of what we know that it could be, you know.
And, 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 and I'll just jump in before that, i- 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 it seems to me that you, you know, either the language stays, in which case it's maybe a little bit misleading to people, which can be rectified by, you know, what we're doing tonight, you know, in public, talking about it, saying, well, it doesn't really mean that because it's a regional school committee. So we could move forward with, with, you know, the language as written. Or we could clarify it, as been suggested by town council, just to, to make it clear. Does not, and then also through tonight and other places and avenues, make it known that, well, that, that wasn't done, you know, to, to eliminate, it's just to clarify because they're not considered by the law to be a, 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 official of the town, they're official of the region, or however you said it, I forget the exact terms. But, um, either way, it sounds like
But then.
this, this legislation isn't how you would get a recall.
Right.
But I do want to clarify that in, if we work together with
Yep.
House and Senate Council, to get a clarification on that, I think that would be worthwhile maybe before voting on it.
Right. And I guess my other question, my other thought, not a question, but a thought, is, so I do believe, you know, um, Attorney Randazzo brought this up at town meeting, explained that this could be a glitch in the process, but yet everyone, no one wanted to amend it because it wasn't amended and no one changed it. So should we really take it upon ourselves to change it, I guess is the question? Or should we let it go back to town meeting, which we know we're going to have one in November, and let people decide on it again? So I just.
Well, what would they be deciding on at that point? Because if, if at the end of the day, this is complicated at best.
Right.
If at the end of the day, there's a legal entity of the town of Lakeville, a legal entity of the town of Free Town, then a quasi-independent legal entity of the regional school district, what, what would be, we'd be revoting? Because even if we put it in there or don't put it in there, we've still got this problem.
Right. Well, to clear, maybe their choice would be to clarify it in some way and say, you know, well, no, we didn't, I guess we have to accept that it's not school committee people. But at least have the opportunity to vote on it. I mean, we told them that this was going to come up and they wanted to go ahead with it, to try it like it is. So I, I just don't know that. But how can we adopt something knowing that it can't happen? That's misleading too.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to slow down the whole thing either.
But that's what happened that night, though. So do we owe it to folks to say, this is the process by which you have to do this?
But I think at the time, you know, not knowing, you know, the, I guess the digging in deeper, um, that there wouldn't be an option, um, to be able to address that.
Right. And at the last meeting, I said that, you know, I'm comfortable on these changes. But since that time and since I said that, I have heard, you know, from people saying, you know, it should go back to town meeting. Now, I said at the last meeting that I feel as though we should be able to make these changes. It's just, you know, some folks are going to be upset that it doesn't include the school committee.
At, at this point, you've, you've handed us in the legislature a petition to file.
But this isn't from the legislature. This is coming from the lawyers.
But the overall document, it, it's, it's, you've already asked us to file the legislation.
Yep.
We're working out the language of that legislation. Um, I, 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 I don't know that town meeting vote, like I say, is, it's definitely not necessary, but I think what you're getting at more is if it, if it is deemed that, which, what we're discussing here tonight is that because it is a regional, uh, officials and not town officials, that this, this, uh, this legislation would not cover that. There is something different that's necessary to do that. It would be better to go to special town meeting with an article that deals with the region recall. I, I mean, just thinking out loud that if you want to move things forward, that's probably a, a better avenue to take.
And, and just on that, I'm thinking it, it wouldn't necessarily, and I don't know if you disagree, but just sort of thinking out, on what you said, I mean, that could be as simple as to see if the town would authorize the select board to pursue this.
I guess my question is.
In conjunction with Free Town or whatever.
Why, why wouldn't the House Council have suggested this, this change?
Because it's, it's really not, like I say, policy wise, it, 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 so it's understood. So the, as, so the language as originally written specifically is okay because it's, in legal world, it's understood that the region doesn't, isn't included. So that's why I got back to the clarification that, that, the proposed change really, and I didn't understand this at first, I had to dig into this. But so legally, what was stated is fine. It just doesn't happen to include the region. So House Council's like, oh, that's fine.
Because it speaks to Lakeville officials.
Speaks to the Lakeville officials. Yeah, of course, the region is not included. So they're not saying, hey, you got to change this to make sure that the region, because it's not included in legal terms. The change that was town council proposed was simply to clarify that, spell it out, says, does not include. Because, you know, knowing that people thought that that was included. So you know what I mean? It's, it's not, so House Council is saying, you can't have this language as, as originally written, because you have a dis- school district that's voted in differently. You can have the language. But you do need to understand that it doesn't include.
And I think I would just, just to put it that way. And I don't know what they, like, how, I'm sure that they are diligent, but like, I don't know that they go this far down in the weeds
No.
in terms of looking at regional school district agreements. in terms of looking at regional school district agreements and things like that, like that. I I just wouldn't expect that, and that's sort of what you kind of look for, I won't say you necessarily look for it from town council, but what when they come back and ask a question or they're engaging us in a dialogue about sort of language, that's what we do.
So my question to town council is, what is the process that would need to take place um on a regional school agreement um to amend it?
So I can't answer that question like in a five-second snapshot. Okay, I really can't. Um, I think as I look at the the landscape right now, right? I know that there's a special act that would either need to be rescinded or amended in some way, because that special act, your regional school district agreement was drafted, predicated on the possibility that the special act would pass, and the special act did pass, when it passed, it automatically triggered this, right?
Right.
So we probably need to get rid of the special act. We need to amend the regional school district agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And that would require negotiations between the two towns, right? And then that would ultimately need to get approved by the state. And because they approve all changes to regional school districts. And I'd honestly have to get the elections people to like sit there and look at this with a fine-tooth comb. And we do represent Freetown as well, so like everybody would have to be on board that they wanted this this change, right? Um, to identify what the best path is. And then the regional school district has counsel too.
Right.
So some more lawyers.
Kind of walking through what you said in my mind, I'm now thinking like, okay, if we were to amend the agreement to say, we're only gonna vote for Lakeville reps and Freetown reps, if that was one of many options. Then do we have, then if a recall petition for the school committee has passed, can we now not actually enact that unless it's against somebody that's only been voted on by an individual town, right? Like,
I mean, I think.
Like, would they then fall under this? Because now they're.
I mean, do I think it's possible that we could simply, i- if we change the manner of voting and change the regional school district agreement and got rid of the two thousand twelve or amended the two thousand twelve or rescinded that old special act? I could, and the voting was set up in a way where we made, I mean, I think we could get the legislature to agree to like, allow us to define that position as being a town position for purposes of the recall act that is before you now. See what I'm getting at?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But it just, it's a lot of, it, well, you can leave the language the way it is, right? I'm trying to look out for Lily. When someone walks in and wants to take out recall papers, a recall petition for a Lakeville seat on the regional school district committee, I'm going to assume that she's gonna call us.
Yep.
Or she's not, she's gonna give him a recall petition, and then somebody's gonna say, eh eh, maybe the person that's the subject of the recall and is gonna say, hey, wait a minute, this, and it's just gonna create sort of that 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 larger issue.
And losses.
May never happen, right? Um, but that's, I mean, again, that's all that that was intended to do was clarify. It wasn't intended to take away something that the voters voted on. It was just to recognize that, you know, this process is gonna, if if it is attempted to be applied to a regional school district committee member is problematic and subject to challenge on a variety of different levels.
So I don't see myself adopting, um, you know, without the, you know, the language proposed by town meeting because of that reason of, you know, the transparency of not, of knowing that we voted something in that we wanna pursue, that can never happen.
Yeah, and and I don't want to stall this whole thing either, like, and if we wait. Exactly. And you already have a request to file.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, this is probably a ridiculous question. Is there any notion of a withdrawal or a request to file? Are we just wasting time?
No, I I he- here's what I think. All right, the the bulk of this recall, we've hashed out, we've figured it out. So so if you take the regional school committee members out, I think the language that's been figured out fits everybody, town councils been through it, house council's been through it. You know, before I file, I can throw in Senate Council possibly, but at some point, they'll get involved, you know. This shouldn't be the big deal, but just to be, you know, careful. But in general, for the rest of the town elected officials, the language is there with what you have before you. So we, you know, so I I, that's why I wanted to come to that, because I'm like, well, we can move forward to make sure that we get recall set up for the bulk of the officials of the town.
Yep.
And then we can work on what has to be done separately, now that we're, you know, we we've been through this. If I recall a town meeting, it was said, even by the petitioner, it was, well, let's just send it to the legislature and see what they say about this regional, you know, issue, et cetera. And uh or any language. So we've done that, it's kind of come out of that, we're coming out of this process, the initial review processing. Regional school committee is gonna require something else for recall. Because it's the two towns, because it's actually regional officials, not town officials. So I think that's the explanation that can be given, but we can move forward with the rest of the officials.
Right. I mean, I'm I'm pers- personally comfortable with what we have in front of us with all the changes, um, because I do think it solidifies a number of areas, which is good. It clarifies the town versus regional officials. I know it's not going to be popular by any means, but if it helps clarify and avoid issues down the road, I'm a hundred percent behind figuring out what the path is forward for the regional district.
Agreed.
I mean, I think we owe that, you know, this came up a couple of times, you know, petitions came in and people would say like, oh, well, did did you have a lawyer look at this? Did you have this to look at this? And they said, we're we're just normal public folks, like, we're trying to do the best that we can. And I think we should call on our resources to figure out how do we make this happen? I mean, I I would be willing to send this forward with all of the changes, because you're still gonna get them, look at them, Senate's gonna get involved, so nothing's actually being filed. Yeah, we might be here again, who knows? Um, and then we figure out how to make it happen, but we're gonna need lots of discussions with Freetown as well.
I mean, I guess my thing is, I wish that Senate Council had seen it, because I would have really been interested in their opinion on what's written here exactly. Not what our lawyers, how our lawyers have changed a petition, um.
But again, they're not, i- i- you know, it's it's not, it's like the House Counsel looked at it and said, if you wanna do that, that's okay. If you wanna leave the language as is, that's okay, but they looked at the revision, the town council came up and said, sure, we have no issue with that. Because it's clarification. So I think it's, it's only now that we're saying, well, it would be a separate issue to go to House or Senate Council to say, how would you do a regional?
I know you.
And that's kind of outside this.
I know you pretty well.
Yeah.
And I think you would be overthinking this like I am at least if it was up to you to make this change to to speak for everybody who spoke, you know, in a different way. I've done that in the past, been trashed for that because, you know, whatever. So in this case, you know, we know better, um, that it can have difficulties passing it the way that it is, but it doesn't matter. Either way, we're gonna, you know.
Well, I don't think the difficulty is passing it, the difficulty is the end result.
Right, the end.
That you have legislation that didn't get you a recall for for the regional.
Regional school committee. Right.
So it's it's not, like I say, that's where it's it's the.
I mean, plus, we, all three of us are willing to try, we're trying to find a way to give people that recall, but yet we're willing to put in here, but it's not gonna be this. So I mean, it just.
No, I I.
And and a lot of folks that, you know, watch the meeting aren't gonna dive into the details like we just have been for the last forty minutes, forty-five minutes, so.
And I agree. I mean, that was my first thought is, you know, do we want to take that language out or specify that the region isn't included? Because then, like I say, then first glance is first paragraph, the first thing someone sees is, oh, you're changing that, why? And it's not an easy explanation.
I know, to us it is, because we under- under, I think we understand, you know, what went into making that regional agreement. And I actually remember those choices, you know, how they were elected, I remember. So, um, and it wasn't a joint town meeting, we did it, we voted separately, and we never had to go to a joint because they both approved it. But uh, there was a lot of work that went into that, and, you know, we did do it collectively. Because it was something that the towns both wanted. Um, but it is, the region, we've always said it, is its own beast.
And I mean, just to go back to the to the point I made at town meeting at the beginning, which is, you know, recall doesn't exist in state law, right? So it, the ability to hold an election and to hold a recall election is completely, you know, derives from what the legislature allows, not to put it back to but I mean, you know, it's it's really, ha- ha- have I seen special home rule petitions get that get passed that I that, you know, we look back and ten, fifteen years later go, wow, how'd that get passed? Right? Because it just seems to, you know, raise a whole host of issues and not to be, stop being derogatory, anybody who's looking at it, but you know, a lot of times, there's a lot of um stock put in some of these local government issues because of home rule. You have the right to figure out what government structure works best for you within some legal limits, but not.
Um, so I know we've been talking about this one issue for a while now. Um, I had a couple of minor comments, I don't know if Ari passed them on or not, where there's, we seem to go between like lowercase select board, uppercase select board.
So it should be lowercase.
There's all sorts of various.
That for the town too, I think.
Yeah, then there's like.
And 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 my understanding from, you know, there's the whole manual on drafting legislation. I think the legis- legislature likes the small, lowercase, not 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 uppercase.
Then we flip back and forth between like gender-specific, gender-neutral pronouns. I don't know what the best thing to standardize is, but.
I don't know where the, I don't know where the legislature is on that, to be honest with you. I I personally, in my writing, have started to use they and their.
I do at work too.
Because it just is, it makes, it's easier, right? Um, but I don't know whether that's what, I haven't looked at the legislative drafting manual in a while to see if that's.
Yeah, I.
There's no style guide yet.
I think that's addressed, but.
I mean, well, we've been talking this long, what do we want to do? Um, does anybody want to make a motion with all the edits? None of the edits, it's gonna get passed on, I'm sure you'll be talking to the senator anyways about, are, is your office comfortable with this in here or not in here? We're all gonna be talking again. This isn't, this isn't finalizing anything.
No, it's really just giving us the go-ahead to keep moving.
Yep. Yeah, I don't want to hold things back, because like you said, we're holding up recall for dozens of people over.
Right.
Eight that might not even be able to anyways.
Right.
Without something more.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it it to me, it at at this point, it looks like the regional school committee members would have to be a separate legislation to deal with the regional agreement, the acts that enable that agreement.
Okay.
Because it will not happen through this one.
Yes.
All right, well, I'll step down and make a motion to accept the edits um by both House Counsel and Town Counsel um to then be sent back to House Counsel for further review and further discussions with the Senate.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Yes, quick. How are we gonna keep it on our radar um to pursue um, the second piece of this for the regional? I guess it's maybe that doesn't, isn't part of this vote.
Well, I mean.
No, but let's, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna do the vote and then I'll.
And then we'll.
Shy him a little bit.
All right, so I'll hold my.
All right, so we got a first, we got a second, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
You went too fast.
I'm sorry.
Say aye.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passing unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the clarification that you've given us so far. And yes, we are determined to figure this out, so.
So in it, like, I think in the first instance, you gotta touch Freetown, right? Um, as you know, we represent both communities. We're happy to work with both communities if you want us to. Right? And in researching this issue, otherwise, we would just need the consent of both towns, right? Because it's a a matter which you both have a a, you know, quite significant interest.
Right.
But so that'd be the first place to start, is talk to Freetown and see, you know, whether it's a request to come before their board, or it's just a discussion between administrators to start, but I think that's the first place you start. Because if Freetown's not gonna be on board, I don't know that that.
Right.
So we're, we've requested a joint meeting with um the select board anyways about the MBTA communities, um, so.
That's a ways off, I think, though.
Well, we can always call a meeting and.
Yep. I mean, Ari, do you wanna touch base with their administrator this week? Appreciate it.
See if we can schedule a joint meeting and um.
Step one.
Step one.
All right. Okay. Um.
Want to do a joint meeting, or do you want to send a letter to them asking if they're interested in engaging in this?
I think the joint conversation would be.
That's fine with me. I wanna start there. Or do you wanna?
Which one?
Do you wanna talk to them and see if they're open to doing a joint?
Yeah, I can, I can give.
I mean, the email alone will.
Give the administrator a call, or drop her a line either way, we can talk about it.
All right.
She'll bring it back to her chair, her chair, and we'll see what.
Okay. All right, appreciate it. Okay, um.
All right.
You know, thank you, Representative.
Continue, any questions? We'll we'll keep working on it and and I think it's important for anybody that is watching. The the intent is to get to the every elected official.
Yes.
Yep. Just may not be through this.
Right.
All right.
Thank you, Representative Moore.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, your time.
All right, so that that, um.
Back to nine?
I was gonna say nine, or is anybody else that needs to get out of here that we can?
Um, hi. Are you guys here for the hospital?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, let's do it.
You do that.
All right, uh, thank you for being patient and waiting. That was we don't have good snacks tonight, but, all right.
There's no snacks.
Yeah, yeah, right? I got a fig bar in my bag if you wanna fight over it. All right, uh, fifteen, discuss recent meeting between Rhino Capital and town of Lakeville regarding the former hospital site. So, um, Ari, would you like to give us a summary of that discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Sharon, and the purpose of this is just to provide transparency on that. Um, there's a meeting on October, on August first between um my uh myself, um, the town planner and representatives from Rhino Capital. Um, there's mainly about process, wanted to know what the best way to go forward was. Um, they gave some rough idea of what they're talking about without putting a lot of detail, looking at the mixed-use development, combination of research and development, forty B, assisted living, age-restricted, specifics go unclear at this point. Um, they are basically looking to do a by right development, um, the possible nature park in there as well during a, in an area where, which wouldn't be developed. Um, there are, uh, I guess I said earlier, the focus of discussion was on process. Um, we advise the developer to uh bring it to prepare a site plan if they feel so appropriate. When they're ready to bring that to the appropriate land use boards to uh, to so to go forward in the public process. Um, there's no specific timeline at this point.
Okay, all right.
There's no specific, there's no specific timeline at this point.
So essentially, they brought forward to the two of you a conceptual idea. Not looking for any approvals, not looking for any guidance, other than what's the process?
Right, your plans and that, just just a be- be- a basic concept of um, a cer- of of a certain, a certain balance of um of uh, of of functions, a fun- that qualify under the mixed use. So for example, the R and D, um, you know, fifty, fifty thousand, hundred thousand square feet, that kind of thing. Um, the uh, a certain number of forty B units, a certain number of age-restricted units, and a um, a uh assisted living facility.
Okay. And that's all by right in our current mix.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Um, I did notice researching some other stuff at the registry of deeds, it looks like in April, they took out a nine and a half million dollar loan on the site. So the timing of that meeting and that makes me wonder what the planning board is gonna see.
I sense that they've been kind of mulling around what to, how to proceed, and they kind of, and I think they probably were interested in finding some some directions we weren't gonna provide them. Um, but for, you know, for the most part, we said, this is the process, you should go through this, to where you need to go, was, you know, we're now probably thirty, forty minutes.
Okay, all right. Um, any questions from the members?
So that money was taken out against the deed for Lakeville Hospital specifically, for that property.
Read the the entry at the registry of deeds, yes. You know, I believe that was put up as collateral. For like nine point five or nine point six, somewhere in that area, April twenty-seventh, maybe. Um, all right, so yeah, I mean, I, you know, put this on here because we know people have said like, oh, the town is meeting with them and making deals and such, and we just, nope, we're just gonna give it out. Um, any developer should not have a fundamental expectation that if it's an update to our staff that they're gonna give to three of us, that we wouldn't also want the opportunity to speak about it in open session.
I did make that clear to them that we're, that we're committed to an open process here.
Yep.
So that they, I, I made it clear that any information they provided, information that I would share with the board, the board could decide what to do with that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so on, and as you know, I, I wish I could help all three of you very soon after that meeting could play.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I have just a question, um, so typically forty B usually goes to zoning board for approval.
Yeah.
But, um, these others would go to planning board, so.
If they, also, there's a possibility if they wanted to subdivide, which I don't know if they want to or not, if they wanted to subdivide, they have to go to planning board. If this, if the, because they're doing, it's talking about several different function, I'm speculating here.
Yeah.
Talking about several different functions, like a, you know, R and D section, uh, a forty B section, assisted living section, whatever. There, there's, I would say, I would think they'd want to get some kind of subdivision, now of course it'd require a planning board action.
But none of those are zoning changes because it's already zoned for that.
Committed uses, correct.
Commuted uses.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, do you have any questions?
No, none at this time.
All right, evening, sir.
Ari, I was having trouble hearing you, did, did Rhino present in this meeting any plans for the types of warehouses that they initially came in with?
I got, I got sense of spec. I got a sense, I got a sense of spec and that they'd probably build when they had a, when they had a tenant, so there, there, there were no specific plans.
So I heard forty B housing, R and D, other, what, what other uses? Assisted living.
Assisted living.
Age restricted. Age restricted, two separate things to.
Those are two separate things, assisted living is, you know, could be memory care or nursing home or something like that. Age restricted is, um, uh, you know, housing that's restricted by age, fifty five or older.
Fifty five or older.
Yeah.
Okay, did you present any, any conceptual sketches or anything, can you put anything up on the town's website with this?
Nothing to provide.
Okay.
No, there'd be, and there wouldn't be a, an official plan until they've come before the planning board and presented such documentation. And is that still a forty three D, what's the expedited permitting?
Forty three D.
Forty three D.
That's, that whole thing is still, so anything new that comes through would have to run through that process again?
Right, if, yeah, assuming that they are not resoning, yeah.
Right, okay, all right, evening.
Noel Rillo, um, Lakeville, I'm just wondering, um, it, it, planning, and how the remediation of that property is integrated with any kind of planning in terms of who are they beholding to? Are they beholden to the state EPA, are they beholden to the town? I mean, a, a, and, and furthermore, like, at, at what steps in their plans are they required to do the remediation, I mean?
I, I would hesitate to speculate, given that no plans have been efficient, have been presented to planning, and then based on those plans, planning or ZBA, whomever would have to step in, or conservation or anybody, would have to then at that time say, based on the plan that you've submitted to the town, here are the things that would have to or not have to happen, so I'm, I'm not going to speculate because that falls under a different board's purview.
Yeah, it's, um, it's kind, and I'm wondering, because it's the state EPA, am I right? Is it the state?
Yes, the state DEP.
Yep, and, and they would, DEP, would have to sign off on any remediation done. Would they also, um, would they also be able to say, okay, before you do A, B, and C, in other words, before you break ground on an assisted living facility, you have to do, so would the town rely on the state to be making sure that that was done?
Yeah, I do believe, um, Lorraine, Ari, maybe you guys can, I think they've been involved in this process along anyways with the hospital.
Lorraine, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, they have been identified, um, a, a number with the DEP. Um, I don't know what you call it, but.
I remember Tyler saying something like, anytime they needed to replace windows, they had to make sure that, you know, DEP knew about it. So I kind of have a feeling.
I think there are two, two regulatory issues, there's the buildings themselves, which say in the process of remediating, actually, they have remedied them, or remedied several of them already, and then there's the landfill.
The soil.
And the landfill is, um, is a different matter entirely, it can be, you know, it's possible they may be able to get a, a, um.
A cap.
Cap, um, a, um, it's late night here, restricted use, um, and, uh, an AUL, uh, and, uh, and I could use limitation or something like that, that'll be regulatory with the state.
So we should be hearing more about the state EPA and DEP?
Yeah, I think as this develops, yeah, but as it was right now, this is just more of an informational meeting, just talk about process.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Noel. Good evening. Hi, Susan.
Hello, Mr. Chair, um, Ari, were there any updates from the DEP as far as more broken windows and stuff?
No, no, I've heard, no.
Emails were sent to Seth Pickering, addressing that, and he said he was going to speak to Nate, this was the end of June, and.
I, I know Nate's been taught, it was stupid that he's not here anymore.
I know.
But, but I know that he, I know he says with the ball with the EP on this stuff, like, I wouldn't feel comfortable. I know he wasn't prepared to talk into that too deeply with.
Right, because I mean, there are more and more broken windows, um, that aren't sealed up.
Yeah.
Windows that are open, of course, you've all seen the graffiti and everything. But, um, the middle of June, an email was sent, and we got initial response just saying that we'll speak to Nate, and it's, that's the end of it, I haven't heard anything else, so.
Okay, I can, I can.
Can follow up?
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to have them.
That was middle of June, you said?
Yeah, seal up those windows that are now, you know.
Is it just like weather elements that are?
Clearly broken.
So it's vandalism?
Mm-hmm, more windows, and there are windows that are open, which how they could possibly get open would be someone would have to be in the building to do it. But this has been like this since the middle of June, and nothing's been done about it. And then the other interesting thing, I know it's kind of nitpicky, but I remember Tyler specifically saying that they would maintain the property and all they had to do was move one, they haven't touched that one since the day they owned it. I mean.
We, we get, it's starting to get a little bit outside the agenda item, but we can sort of, we can fall back and get an update.
Okay, that's all.
Definitely, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right, uh, thank you for that update, Ari, appreciate it. And, yes, going to planning or ZBA is the next step, if anything. All right, um, so we're back to surges, number nine. Uh, let's see, discuss impossible vote to award surges bid for Department of Public Works Supplies and Paper and Office Supplies.
This is just a stationary annual thing, if I recall, so, um, I think we just have to make one motion, right?
Right.
So I'd like to make a motion that, um, we award, um, surges, um, which stands for Southeast.
Regional.
Regional.
Services.
Services group.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Bids for Department of Public Works Supplies, Paper and Office Supplies through, this is what, oh, it's.
I think they're, um.
Because some of them are.
Most are one year. Yeah.
One year period, are we supposed to do? Yeah, I gave you the motion on the cover page. All right, I make a motion to award the following contracts with pricing as noted on bid award sheets, all commencing on July first, twenty twenty-three, and waive the reading of the. Second.
All right, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimously passed, thank you. All right, uh, item ten, discuss impossible vote on a time for special town meeting on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, as we neglected to do that at our last meeting.
I make a motion, um, that we approve the time for our special town meeting on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to start at six thirty P M.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Uh, let's see, twelve, uh, discuss, number twelve, discuss impossible vote to appoint Open Space Committee Representative to the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, let's see, I got to get to it, I believe Amy Knox is the person being recommended by Open Space.
I can certainly make a motion, um, to appoint the Open Space Committee Representative, um, Amy Knox to the Community Preservation Committee with a term to expire on July thirty first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, that's okay. Spielers joining us?
Once again? For the housing seat, that was approved by the agency's office in February, and we have heard nothing about it. It's not come up on the agenda at all to fill that seat.
That rings a bell, I thought we had discussed that at some point in the past.
Community member at large, um, because we amended the.
Yeah, did, did we get any interest, Tracy, that we know of?
For what?
The, the, what used to be the rent control seat.
We're not always back, but we didn't for this round, I don't believe, or I don't know if we have the current applications, do we? Am I wrong about that?
No.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's on that list, though, because it was specific, they were supposed to have like housing experience, so we can add them to the list of vacancies.
I was just going, went back to look at our list, I don't see.
It does, it's not on there.
Yeah.
So you can put that on there.
I was told someone submitted something last week.
Oh.
Last week?
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Not to me, I.
We'll dig into that.
Okay, maybe they gave it to the clerk, but if it was the clerk, they would have.
Rod upstairs, yeah.
Yeah, the last thing that we received was someone for the Energy Advisory Committee.
Correct.
That was the last letter of interest we received.
Okay. Because I was told someone submitted something last week, so I don't, I can find it.
We got a CVC application, so it's like, like eight months ago, six months ago from somebody.
I haven't looked at my pending files, but I've got nothing.
There were a few, but, yeah, but this is something recently.
Yeah, if you know who it is, if you want to send Tracy the name and.
Yeah, if they did it by email, it's possible they got caught up in our spam filters.
Okay.
So, um, if you let me know about that, then I can go through and check it.
Sure.
I would say, I think so, yeah, we'll look for it tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, number fourteen, discuss impossible vote on the request from the Lakeville Arts Council, twenty twenty-three Festival Committee, to place a sign at the intersection. What?
He's jumping around, he's at fourteen now, he's on fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I scratched off thirteen by mistake, because I thought we were going there and then we got the question.
Well, I'll make a motion, um, that we approve the request from the Lakeville Arts Council, twenty twenty-three Festival Committee, to place a sign at the intersection of Route seventy-nine and Precinct Street, and a banner at Dickren, Darren Square, um, period. I see that, advertising, yep, uh.
Second.
We've reached that point of the night.
Well, now I just thought we were going back to thirteen.
Oh.
We will, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, all right, back to thirteen, I scratched off too soon.
You're just keeping us on our toes, that's okay.
Yeah, discuss impossible vote to designate a select board representative to the Library Director Search Committee.
Um, well, I'm going to make a, um, a motion that we, um, appoint, maybe, um, Brian Day as a representative, um, to serve on the Library Director Search Committee.
Is anybody else interested?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, let me pull that back, I'm tired, if anybody's interested, I guess that's where we should have started. Um, my apologies.
Brian, if you absolutely can't do it because of your schedule, I will volunteer, but if you would like to do it, you can do it.
That's the only question that came up my mind, is, is how many, like, what time interviews and such would be? Um, it would be very interesting, um, I'd like to give it a shot, and if the schedule turns out to be more than I can commit to, we can come back.
Well, because it's, it's very interesting, in the letter that, um, was sent to the select board, it said, we will be filling the staff position at our next.
Meeting on August twenty-third.
Yeah, so that would put.
Does, have they already done this?
I think that means a staff rep.
Oh, okay.
You want to have a staff rep, it wasn't, it wasn't the director position, it was a staff rep.
Okay, oh, okay.
So does that mean it's an eight-person committee, or an even number?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Yeah, that would be an even number.
Hmm, okay. All right, well, you know, I'm happy to serve at this point, and if it looks like it might be too much, so happy to come back and say as much.
Okay, so you made that motion, Lori?
Yes, again, my apologies for not.
Keeping me on my toes.
But you made it so I can just second, right?
Yep.
Is that a second?
Yep, it's a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We're running out, we did sixteen, we did a lot of sixteen. Uh, seventeen, Building Committee Updates, although, have there been any meetings, or do they all fall right after this meeting?
Um, the senior center, Lori Fahey, who's the director of the, um, senior center, has put together that group, the actual feasibility study folks, we asked for some input on what they'd like to see for the future of the building, so she's put that group together, and I think, uh, they either met last week or they're meeting this week, I can't remember.
Okay.
But.
Both, both.
Both, yeah.
All right, okay, anything from Fire Station?
Yes, um, we're meeting on, um, Wednesday the twenty-third, uh, with our OPM, Pomeroy Associates, and on the agenda, we'll be discussing, uh, the, uh, request for the geographical RFQ, um, I guess firm, that we would have to do a geological study, right?
Geotechnics survey.
Like, thank you, I know it was something geo.
And as, as we discussed, the, um, the idea was that we're going to the Parks Commission once they have a little more to go with.
Right, so, um, uh, we have, Ari has, our, our town of history has reached out and talked, spoke to the chair at the Parks Commission, um, I guess believe, before Melissa went on vacation, and I guess it must have gotten muddied in the waters because the Parks Commission had a meeting, and somebody called and said, Lorraine, I, the Fire Station Building Committee is on the agenda. I'm like, oh, was unaware, so I guess it just ended up getting on their agenda, um.
There was some confusion.
Yeah, there was just confusion, so we've, we've kind of circled back and tried to figure out where that occurred, so we will be on a future meeting with the Parks Commission to discuss the site locations, or the proposed site locations.
Thank you very much.
Stay tuned, there's more to come.
Will do.
Okay, um, could I just add that, since a couple meetings ago, I had said a few things about the septic system at the existing town hall building, and then there was a informational letter that was sent by the Board of Health, but since that time, I've spoken to two out of three of the Board of Health members, and if I made it seem like they were trying to prevent anything from happening, I apologize. And I, you know, worked, I talked to, you know, Chris Pratt and Bob Pelucci, and I, I didn't think that that's what I was getting across, I, I was hoping to get across that I have concerns on the existing location, but, you know, I told them, you know, you never wrong to do the right thing, and I never meant to imply that they were trying to, um, not get the project to go through. I know the Board of Health would do pretty much, you know, like all the other fantastic people, we have anything for our fire folk, so, uh, just putting that out there.
All right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, Old Colony, no new updates on their feasibility study, they weren't expecting to be invited into the official feasibility, um, process until late August, so hopefully the next couple of weeks we'll get a update from them. All right, moving on, eighteen, if we still have the stamina, update discussion on classification and compensation study. So, I know this gets a little tricky with our HR director now leaving, but where do we currently stand? And I know there's some questions on this one.
Are you asking for questions?
We're just finding my agenda page here.
I don't know if it's in there, because we added it after the fact, yeah, so it's, it's on the blank page.
Right, right.
Um, I guess first, Ari, has there been any motion since the last update to be aware of?
Um, the, uh, the J Qs are underway, um, those are the job questionnaires, the, uh, and department employees are gradually filling them out and submitting them back in. Um, and the, um, the comp, the, uh, the, uh, comparable study of the, the benchmarking was about, was about to go out. I, um, we have. I, um, we have instructions to do so. I told them to hold off pending tonight after my conversation with the chair, what would, uh, please suppose the board.
Okay.
Um, so once that's decided, we'll, they'll go out and do to the, uh, to the comparable jurisdictions.
Alright, appreciate that. Um, I know there were some questions on, um, physicians included, not included. Um, does anybody want to have that discussion?
Um, so I'm pretty sure that, you know, um, John Biorella, who's our human resource person, had said that all positions, non-union positions, would be studied, and there was no exceptions. And I thought that that was the takeaway on the first meeting that I sat in on with Ari and John with, um, the company. But I guess now we're finding out that that's not the case. There are some positions that are excluded.
So, Mr. Chair, as I stated before, first of all, you know, don't blame John for this, blame me. Um, there was a, he, he asked me the question, and I said, well, they're not part of the wage and, and they're not part of the wage and personnel board, because that's, they're excluded from the wage and personnel board, so it turns out we're included, and I said, probably not, because they're not part of the personnel, the board. So there's no nefarious intent on my part, it's simply a judgment call based on that. If the board wants to have them in, I can understand that. There was, there was a reason that I provided to the board that I didn't, that I wanted, wanted to caution against how you're officially in the study. But, you know, if, if this was set according to the board to do so, then, then it would be easy enough to have them in.
I think I, I just honestly had the same assumption coming away from that, so I'm, I'm not upset by it of any means. I, I understand it was a judgment call, and completely forgot that we have physicians outside of wage and personnel. I mean, including them for top-down look isn't the worst thing in the world, I guess. And if they're already engaged with the company.
I don't think I would afford to cause any heartburn either way. I am, I'm a little concerned about the matter, which I emailed you about.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'll, I'll find a way to explain that, so. They are non-union positions, so.
Yeah.
I can probably say that.
Because I guess I was under the, um, impression that it was all non-union, so, um, but let this be a lesson for us, to make sure that we ask that question going forward, um, but I'm not opposed to having a top-down. I mean, we're here, we're doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll ask them in the morning to include those as well.
Okay, anticipate any changes in cost or, okay.
It's just, it's just, all, all the work on the benchmarking is frankly done by the people you send it to. It's a very long form. So, um, I, I, I was, you know, adding fours aren't gonna make a big difference either way.
So I do know that, um, all the employees are going to have to do their part on this. I can envision most employees getting their comments or interviews done on the clock. But is there some employees that will have to be doing this like, uh, either police or fire, or even highway, that may have to do it outside of their regular?
Well, the police, fire, and highway union positions would not be in the study anyway, so.
But we have non.
We have non-unions in those, right, we have, we have a, a very, a very small number of non-union positions in police and fire.
Can we do something about not taking that money that they have to get paid out of their budgets, I guess? How mu, I mean, but actually, can we figure out how much it's gonna be, you know? I don't even know how many on, on.
Take five minutes or an hour to fill out the thing?
Well, that's my question, you know, I don't know, I haven't seen it, I, you know.
I just, I, 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 I don't think it's a huge deal, but, uh, but I hear you're saying I'll be sensitive to that.
Yeah.
Um, with the, you know, the limited number of non-union positions in those functions you talked about, it is a very small number in those. You know, they're mostly salaried employees at a higher level, so I, I, I don't think that'll be, become, be a problem. But, um, but there are also non-union positions in the group that are lower level, um, which are, you know, in some of the various departments, and, uh, and they're gonna have, you know, some questions here. It's probably in their interest to do it, self-interest to do it, but, you know, I can, you know, we can to help them, you know.
Yeah, maybe we can just figure out how much it is, if it's a big deal, if not, no big deal.
Okay.
And then, um, without saying too much, I know there was another date that I didn't think was to be determined, but now we're saying that other date was to be determined, and if we need to.
I'm not sure. What are you talking about?
I really can't talk about it, because it's an executive session matter.
Oh, you mean, you mean?
I think it's better that we don't discuss it.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. But that caught me off guard, too, but anyways.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
I think I know what you meant.
Yeah.
Alright, um, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to any new business that's properly come before the board. I'm aware of any, any old business? Any correspondence from other committees, commissions? Okay, if not, then I'll entertain a motion under Master in Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Bountiful Farms, Inc., first town of Lakeville. Votes may be taken if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public, public body, and the chairman so declares, and not to return to open session.
I'll move. Second?
All in favor?
Carbone, aye.
Baby, an aye.
Day, aye. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And Lake Cam, let us know when we are off, please. Have a good night.